Good eve- good evening, everybody. Welcome to our July twentieth, two twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting with Bruce Township. Get a roll call, please.
Delbrook?
Here.
Craft?
Here.
DeGiorgio?
Here.
Tremblay?
Here.
And Crappy Dapson?
Yes. Do pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution, and to the republic which stands standing in the nation's name, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
So this is a business, a public business meeting, and we do welcome public comment. When it comes time to public comment, we will direct you to the microphone located at the podium. When addressing the board, we wish that you would only have three minutes to speak, and we will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Just please be mindful of the timeline out of respect for all members of the public who might wish to be, to address the board. When addressing the board, we would prefer, we would like that you state your name and your relationship and where you live in township, and please address your comments to the entire board and not to individual board members. We reserve the right to exclude from our meeting an individual who engages in conduct that constitutes a breach of peace. This includes intemperate behavior. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, we are grateful to serve this community and appreciate your support. So that being said, I guess we should get started. So first thing would be the approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have any changes they want to make?
I'd like to add the COVID policy to the agenda.
Where?
So that would be, okay.
Item K, the COVID policy?
Mm-hmm.
I'd also like to make a change, the loan from the general to the water. Instead of fifty thousand, it'd be forty-three thousand.
I'd like to remove the item seven D for the limestone prog- program fuels charge. We did handle that at another meeting, and I did take a check personally to Macomb County for the twenty-two fifty for the additional surcharge.
We probably should just approve it, Mike, because it's over the charge.
We did already. It was already approved.
It's an over two thousand additional amount, so.
But I think we had, we did approve the surcharge. Did we approve the surcharge at our prior meeting? I'm pretty sure we did. That's how we came up with the dollar amount.
Changed.
Okay, we can leave it on there. Okay, so it'll stay. Any other changes?
Yes. I have, I have a correction to the minutes. Page two, marijuana presentation. Says the next step of the township would be to hold town hall meetings or place it on the ballot. There was also a third alternative, and that was to keep the status quo. I'd like that to be noted, please.
Can you repeat it, please? Mike?
Yeah, instead of just to hold town meetings or place it on the ballot, there was a third alternative stated, and that was to keep the status quo.
Do you have any other?
I have a question on the top of page three. There's a motion to form a committee within thirty days. It's been more than thirty days since our meeting. Has that committee been formed?
Not as of right now.
Okay. That's an action item that needs to be taken. And then I have a question on the loan from the general to water. Originally, it was twenty-one-five, then twenty-nine was added, and now it's forty-three thousand? That seems, that's a significant amount.
Yeah, there was like seventeen thousand dollars' worth of meters that were installed in Cloverfield, the new meters, correct?
For the Trilogy building.
Drug Trilogy.
Is that normally, is that normally absorbed by the water fund, or is that something that the developer should absorb?
So we paid, we paid that out, but the developer will reimburse us for that seventeen thousand.
Then why don't?
It hasn't been paid out, actually. It, we haven't paid it out. We're holding it right now, but it's still, the seventeen thousand is.
Then I would suggest that that not be a loan to the water department? If it's going to be reimbursed?
Well, technically, everything should be reimbursed, I think.
Everything?
Well, all, all alone.
Okay, so, so someone's got to make sure that when we get reimbursed, it goes against the water fund.
Right.
That's why the amount came down.
Pardon me?
It actually came down.
That's why the amount came down. We removed it from the loan.
So it was only seven thousand dollars for the meters?
No, it was seventeen. There was a few adjustments that were made, is why we had to drop it down.
Any other relations or additions to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
I'll support. Get a roll call, please.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Delbrook?
Yes. Okay, moving on to comments from the floor. So as I stated, if you could just keep the comments to three minutes, we appreciate it, but if you wanted to speak, please go to the podium. Date your name and your address. Hi, Mary.
Hi. My name's Mary Meisner. I live at four-eight-nine Victoria Lane in the Village of Romeo, and I am also a Bruce Township taxpayer. My comments are in regard to, under new business, the item B, Parks and Recreation, and I am going to speak now before I become senile. Before I begin my comments, I want to make it perfectly clear that I don't hold Bob Seibert responsible for the contents of the proposed interlocal agreement. In his cover letter, he stated, and I quote, "It is important for the boards to understand that all of the substantive provisions of the interlocal agreement were negotiated by trustees, Cop and Tremblay. I offered no input regarding those provisions. Rather, my work involved the preparation of a legally enforceable interlocal agreement that would provide legal status to the commission. After all of that is said, I have attended most of the meetings since this governmental meddling into the operation of Romeo, Washington, and Bruce Parks and Recreation began. Many residents throughout the meetings spoke to the boards and commissions, and their input was quite simple, with three frequently mentioned requests. One, continue with the tri-community parks and recreation. Two, completely remove the politics out of the bylaws. And three, let Parks and Rec continue on with the excellent programs they have provided for forty-plus years. This agreement does absolutely nothing to address what we, the people, frequently shared, and interestingly enough, many of the remarks came from Washington Township residents. The agreement reeks of politics. The current Parks and Rec has a permanent home at three-sixty-one Morton Street, and might I remind you that the donated land and dollars to build the initial building came from the Walter Sheets family, who were Bruce Township residents. It was donated to the Village of Romeo and has been a well-used and appreciated generous donation. The Sheets family would be appalled to know that Romeo is being ignored. The rationale of the village being split by Thirty-Mile Road doesn't fly with we, the people. I have my own opinion what the overall long-term agenda is, and it is because of the actions, it is because of actions rather than social media, hearsay, et cetera. You should also be able to see the pattern. First, WBRW, Channel Six, now located on Wicker Street, Washington Township. Two unsuccessful lawsuits against the Romeo District Library. A resoundingly failed millage to purchase a sports complex at Thirty Mile and Powell Road. And currently, the proposed new bylaws that heavily involve township boards. Most people are in favor of smaller government, and I can only hope that you will see the big picture and revisit these proposed bylaws. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Supervisor, if I just may ask, are you allowing comments from the floor during the agenda items, or would you prefer them all now?
We normally have them at the beginning of the agenda. I know that we have a couple. I know Parks and Rec is definitely a touchy subject. I think that we can allow for comment during our Parks and Rec discussion this evening after we get our introduction from Tremblay and trustee Tremblay's and trustee Cop, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. There's no other comment, we're going to move on?
Just waiting for a few other people to come up. Hi, I'm Bill Thompson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the stewards of Bruce Township Cemeteries. One-three-nine-four-seven-thirty-four mile road, Bruce Township, Michigan, four-eight-zero-six-five. So recently, we formed a nonprofit to help raise money for the cemeteries in Bruce Township. Members of the organization are Steve Farr, Dave Bishop, Frank DeGiorgio, Bob Billick is the treasurer and secretary, and myself is the president. So we are looking to, you know, work with the township to raise funds for the cemeteries to get them into better condition, so we're going to try to do a few fundraisers here. We got a golf outing we're scheduling for October, so we're hoping that Frank, we've asked him to be the liaison to the township board to come up with a list of projects that need to be completed at the cemetery, and then when we raise funds, we're going to turn those funds over to the township for those projects. So, anyway, just wanted to do a brief introduction of that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Hello, Tom.
Hello. Tom Kelkovan, one-two-four-zero-two Frank Drive, Bruce Township. I am a resident of Greenland Sub, and I'm going to speak on item seven A, the Menco Agreement. Just for clarity, I live directly across Mellon Street from the proposed development. Greenland Sub has thirty-two homes. I'm not here to tell you that I represent all of them, but we did discuss it, and it is a consensus opinion. We did not encourage people to come and repeat the same message over and over, so I will try to present it to you as a concern of the sub and myself, obviously. The, when, when this property was considered for rezoning, there was a presentation made to the Planning Commission and the full board at that time, and it was regarding the concerns that we had regarding the wells in that area, and that concern was generated by a situation that, and letters that were presented in relationship to another development that was proposed that did not go through. So that's how the original issue was brought to our attention. The Planning Commission and the board, I think, considered them serious enough to add them to the consent agenda, I'm sorry, to the consent agreement that was negotiated by the attorneys for both sides and approved by the judge. The other concern that we had, and we're, we clearly understand that water does not respect your property lines, and that issues of this nature are generally resolved as a civil matter. Rather than spend a lot of money on a civil case, we thought money would be better spent addressing the problem by including a resolution or a proposed resolution in the consent agreement, and I believe it did. There were benefits derived from the consent agreement. The developer got additional lots. The township was able to maintain the zoning that it wanted according to the master plan and add additional sewer taps. The residents got some assurance that the well issue would be addressed. The second amendment that you are looking at tonight continues benefits for the developer. Actually, it grants him additional benefits. The township retains its benefits. The residents lose any assurance that we had because of the, of the second amendment. We understand that the developer probably has concerns of frivolous claims being placed against him for issues with wells. I think clearly, if, if it's a mechanical issue, if it's a pump issue, if it's a point issue, if it's an issue with a well, there are ways to determine that, and he clearly is not responsible for that. Our concern is the degradation of the aquifer itself and the impact on not only Greenland Sub, but all the other residences in the neighborhood. It's stated that he can't bond, and because he can't bond, he can't meet the requirements. We certainly understand what that means. If you can't get the money, you can't continue under the, the terms and conditions that were in the, in the agreement. The wells in that, the test wells in that area are at the same depth as the wells in our sub. There are concerns and constraints that have been, that have been placed on those wells in order to issue a permit. So there is a concern there. We understand we are not a party to the agreement, and we really have no specific input or ways of leveraging anything, and that's not what we're, that's not what we're asking. What we, I guess we have a question on the agreement, and would hope that it, would you would give it some consideration as you discuss the, the answer. The second amendment calls for striking certain paragraphs, one of which has to do with assuring that there's adequate water for the residents that's in that, in the proposed development. That's, that's fine. We understand that. The other that I guess our question is, it is on paragraph seven and paragraph thirteen G, and basic, I can tell you what they are real quickly. It's that a bond was to be provided to assure that they didn't alter or diminish the water supply of adjacent properties, otherwise connect to township water supply if avail, if available to service the property. Well, if the bond isn't available, then certainly, we understand that those assurances can't be granted. Excuse me. The question that we have is, and I'm assuming even though it is not stated in the second amendment, that it also strikes to connect to city water if available. We also realize that it's not available now to the trailer park, Mobile Home Park, as it was projected at one time. However, the question that we have is, at the very beginning of the development, prior to anything occurring, why is the requirement to connect to municipal water being dropped at this point? Nothing says that it may not be available at some point down the road prior to the completion of the development, and at that time, it would make sense if there is an issue, clearly if there is an issue, that that is a reasonable resolution. So that, that's the question we have. That's the position that we have on the issue, again, realizing we don't have any, you know, any real, we're not signatories to the agreement. We realize that, so we thank you for the opportunity to present ourselves and present our question to you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thanks. Tom, I got a question for you. So obviously, you've spoken with some of the other homeowners over there, and you understand the situation here where the water does not, you know, follow any boundary lines or property lines. So, I mean, if we're going to look to the developer, Mr. Edie, to take something back to the developer, is there other suggestions that you, what you guys would feel comfortable with? I mean, you guys, I mean, because it definitely directly affects you guys more than anybody.
Well, it, it affects beyond our sub. I think it's a, it's a question that at some point in time, you're going to have to address, because there are, I don't know how many for sure, but I know of three, possibly four, large parcels on Mellon that are going to be developed at some point in time, I'm sure, and you don't have municipal water there either. So at this point, I don't know what other resolutions there are, but the issue of if municipal water was to become available to that site, dismissing it at this point, to me, seems to be a little premature.
Yeah. I, I agree with you. I think that may be something that we may go there, but is that going to satisfy?
I, well, yes, I think it will. I mean, as I said, I think everyone understands that their property line does not, you know, designate the boundary for the water, and that it generally becomes a civil matter if these things have to be resolved another way. That's what we tried to avoid.
So you feel that the homeowners would be, would be comfortable with removing items that were requested then by the developer?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, from, from our perspective, if it's not possible to bond, you know, how do you hold his feet to, to something that can't be done? So that, no, that's not, that's not a reasonable thing.
Okay. Thanks, Tom, for speaking on behalf of Greenland Sub Division. Appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Mark Clark. I live at two-six-eight West St. Clair Street in the Village of Romeo, on the good side of the village, Bruce Township side, I'll just mention that. And unlike Mrs. Meisner, I've known Mr. Seibert for probably over forty years, and I blame him for everything. So let's just, let's just get that out in front.
You're consistent.
Yes, I, I am consistent, although foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds, but I'll try to set that aside. I'm speaking here this evening against the interlocal agreement that you have before you in its present form. I'm not saying if it's reconstituted that I would be opposed to it, but in its present form, I am. I'll mention my objections in no particular order of importance. One is, the implication of the agreement is, to me, my inference is that somehow the current structure of Parks and Rec is unlawful, or it's, it's not properly constituted, and that's just not true. It is, the statutory authority under which it was commenced and under which it operates is fine, and you don't need to change it because of, of a misperception of what law applies. Ms. Meisner mentioned the cooperation among the communities. My wife Jane, who is here, we've lived in our home for thirty-seven years. I've lived and worked in the village for forty-four years, and there are three distinct areas of cooperation, of which I've always enjoyed and of which I've always been proud. One was WBRW. Well, we know what happened to that. The village, even as part of WBRW, agreed to construct a studio specifically for WBRW on the Morton Street site, where it still exists, and the village did that at its own expense, but asked Bruce Township and Washington Township to guarantee the cost, because at that time, Heron Communications, which morphed into Comcast, there've been several iterations, but at the time, the cable company, the cable provider, paid the rent, and the rent was used to pay down the debt the village incurred for the construction of the studio. Bruce Township agreed to guarantee that. Washington Township did not. They would not guarantee it. But the guarantee never had to be called, because the loan was paid, and the studio was there, the facility was there, and then suddenly, for some reason, and to people for reasons that are unknown to me, felt that WBRW couldn't exist as this tri-community cable effort, and there was actually a tri-community cable commission authorized by ordinance among the three communities, Washington, Bruce, and the Village of Romeo. But for some reason, that just didn't work, although it worked perfectly. And so the result is, WBRW was, I have to be careful with my words, but let's just say, was, let's say it escaped the village, ended up on Wicker Street in Washington Township in an old fire hall, when it had a perfectly good studio right where it was, but it couldn't be there for the politics. And so this cooperative effort that worked fabulously, suddenly couldn't work anymore, and it was gone. The library, who sues a library? The library. Three communities participate in the library. The village is contributed by all three communities, runs wonderfully, great institution. Who sues libraries? Washington Township sues libraries. And now we have Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec works perfectly. Again, the statutory authorization that I mentioned supports its current existence and the way it operates. So now here we are with this agreement that excludes the village. Not only does it exclude the village, it takes the word Romeo right out of the name of the organization. Everybody wants what the village has, and it's a wonderful thing. The village is a wonderful place to live. It has sewer, it has water, it has police service, and with a cooperative agreement with Bruce Township, has fire and ALS. And when the village and Bruce Township entered into that agreement to provide fire and ALS, what did Bruce Township do? They didn't say, hey, we're going to scrub names off of here, change the name. They added Romeo. Many of your vehicles have Bruce Romeo Fire Department right on them. The village doesn't have a fire department. It's yours. We pay you for the service, and we're glad to have it, but no, we somehow now have to purge Romeo from the Parks and Rec. I say that's nonsense. Everyone wants the village to be a good neighbor when it wants something from the village. And, and I have to say, even though, in, in full disclosure, the village is a client of mine, I am not speaking on behalf of the Village of Romeo. I don't have policy authority. Nobody in the village, the council, the village president, nobody has said, hey, Mark, you're the messenger, deliver this message. This is my message as a resident of the Village of Romeo and as a resident of Bruce Township. Everybody wants what the village wants, and everybody wants the village to be a good neighbor when it wants something from the village. Bruce Township wants additional sewer capacity from the village. You know, be a good neighbor, give us more sewer capacity. And in fact, if we go back to two thousand two, two thousand three, the village had a properly, fully functioning wastewater treatment plant, and the township came to the village. Bruce Township came to the village and said, we want capacity, and we want more capacity, expand your plant. The village did not need to expand its plant, but it agreed to do that, and in a cooperative effort, and the township paid for that. So again, we cooperate. Everybody cooperates as long as it's in their best interest. And I just think that this agreement is terribly unfortunate. I don't think it represents the best interests of the three communities, and I just think that it's part of it, and I don't want to get into the legal weeds on it, but there's a provision in there, I think it's paragraph eight about future boards. Washington and Bruce will levy millage to support this. I question whether contractually you can bind future boards to levy millages to support an institution. We all know what's going to happen here. You're going to enter into this agreement if you do it. Washington and Bruce will enter into this agreement. Village will be shunted aside, and eventually, Washington Township is going to own your Parks and Rec, and I think it's shameful. I don't know if you people are concerned about your legacy. I'm not saying you should be or you shouldn't be, but if you are, your legacy is going to be you oversaw the dissolution of Parks and Rec, and I think it's shameful, and I hope you don't do it, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Any other public comment? Okay. So we're going to move on. Item five, hearings and review, which we don't have any hearings and reviews, so we'll move on to item six, which we have no unfinished business. That leaves us to our new business. Item seven A would be the Menco, Menco Property, Second Amendment to the consent judgment. We do have Representative John Edie here from Menco. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Thank you for some time to allow me to speak to you tonight about this issue. This is a request to amend the consent judgment. judgment for the, the Timbers project on Mellon Street. As part of the consent judgment, the developer was required to attain a bond to protect the water supply for the surrounding residents in case there was an issue with flow rates in the wells. My client over the past couple of years has made efforts to, to secure such a bond, and it's just not a product that's available. So, we're asking that that be struck from the judgment. There has, we did submit a couple of items. One is the water test that he had commissioned. Also, the permit that was conditionally approved by the Macomb County Health Department, which would permit wells to be, wells in the Timbers to be constructed as, as proposed. So, there's, the county determines there's adequate water supply. I do recall, and I was the attorney for Menco at the time, and McGraw Morris was the attorney for the Township at the time, this issue, when it came up, it was, it was not discussed greatly. I know that one of the issues was the trailer park next nearby, and they were having issues with their water supply, and since that time, they have secured a new parcel, new well, and, and that issue has been resolved. So, we asked the council to, to enter into a consent, second amended, amendment to the consent judgment, striking just the language regarding the bond. I did hear the concern as the few moments go in the open, open meeting portion, and I apologize, I did not bring the original agreement with me when I came. I just didn't have it. And what I did propose in the amendment was striking in paragraph seven, just the portion of paragraph seven that applies to the bond, leaving in place the portion in which if there's municipal water available, the developer would connect to that. I know, talking to my client, he would do hand springs to the Township Hall if water was available to the, to the site. So, we would want to leave that in there, actually. So, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'd appreciate it.
So, you're, you're okay with adding back, as Mr. Cal Kaufman stated, that if there was available municipal water supply, you guys would, would hook up to that?
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, I'll have to review my, oh, there's, oh, thank you very much.
At the bottom is item seven.
Yes. So, so item six and item thirteen G specifically deal with the bond issue, nothing else. Item seven deals with the bond issue and the municipal water supply. So, the proposed amended judgment strikes item six, a paragraph six, strikes paragraph thirteen G, but it strikes only a portion of paragraph seven, which is dealing with, with the bond issue. It does not strike the paragraph otherwise connected.
Thirteen G also states otherwise connected township water supply, the last, the later part of thirteen G.
And then, you know what, we can, we can revise that to make it more clear. I think that'll probably make everybody comfortable. But yet, he actually affirmatively does want it, want it to connect to the municipal water supply if available, so.
Do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Edie at all?
No.
Yes. Was there any attempt at looking at some other language that could be bonded?
No. Frank, you know, frankly, I'm not sure how it would be done in terms of guaranteeing water supply and, and private bond for guaranteeing future water supply. I just don't see that being.
Was there, was there anything to look at, like escrowing money instead of obtaining a bond?
There was nothing, we did not look at escrowing money. I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, an issue like this, you'd have to escrow millions. I mean, it would be beyond the scope of the project.
And then, was there anything offered in return for forgiving this obligation?
Nothing was offered, no.
Okay.
I mean, the only issue I got is that this con, this consent judgment was signed by all parties involved at the time, including the judge yourself, our township supervisor, Richard Corey, your developer, and also our township attorney that was representing us at the time. I just don't understand why this was even initially put on there if it wasn't even something that could be enforced in the first place, you know?
That's an excellent question, and something that should have been addressed at that time. The due diligence wasn't completed by either side, I don't think.
But I heard that this would be millions of dollars, and we're conceding something that the developer would have had a million dollars of obligations, and we're not getting anything in return, either are the residents.
I'm, I'm just taking that number off the top of my head. I can't imagine what a lawsuit for lost water supply would be and, and how you'd even pin that on this development when there's so many other developments in that area, so.
I think that that would be a bond where there may be no money paid out on a bond, so.
Normally, when you negotiate agreement, if someone's asking for a concession, the other party would ask, what do I get in return as a concession?
Right.
That's what I don't see here.
So, do you have a proposal?
No, I'm just asking the question.
This is more of a, a situation where the impossibility of a condition asked by the township rather than, than.
I mean, there's something about parties agreed, and we're relieving the developer of an obligation.
Right. Personally, I mean, since we, I mean, I'd like to see the development move forward, obviously. I think it would be something that we need to do. I agree with Mike that it would be nice if you, your developer would come back to offer something in return for, I mean, it is a big obligation that you guys did commit to, and obviously every, all parties have signed. You know, maybe something to, you know, you know, to come back to, I mean, our, our neighboring communities that, you know, obviously Greenland subdivision. Has there been any discussion with this at all between you and the developer at all, Mike?
About concessions?
Any kind of concession at all in regards to that?
It was just a determination, he's prepared to go forward on the project. He's sort of at the starting line. This is keeping him from going forward, and it's an obligation that cannot be met. It's impossible.
Have we been paid for the negotiated consent judgment?
Technically, we don't, the wording would be not until the project, before the project gets started. It hasn't started yet, so we're still on hold on it. Bob, is there any type of a legal thing? Can we ask for any kind of a concession regarding this at all, or is it something that, I mean?
Well, yeah, the short answer is yes. The board should understand exactly what this, what a consent judgment is. This was a zoning lawsuit that was filed by Menco against the Township Act in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And your insurance company that represents, insures the Township, appoints Insurance Defense Council, where there's a money damage claim, and they did that. So, you had a third-party law firm representing you, and they did a great job. And as is typical in most zoning cases, they're resolved through the entry of a written agreement that is negotiated between the parties, approved by the board, approved by the developer, signed by the lawyers, and submitted to the judge. So, the fact that the judge signed this, the judge had absolutely no input whatsoever in this. You hand a consent judgment to a judge, a judge signs it. Judge could care less what's in it. The attorneys, the clients have negotiated it, and, and the attorneys have made sure that there's nothing in it that's illegal. The judge will sign it. The law in Michigan is very clear that on consent judgments, they are not amendable unless both sides agree. So, if we come to a loggerhead on this and we can't agree, and, and Mr. Edie may disagree, but I'm very familiar with the law in this area. He could file a motion, ask the judge to amend it. Judge has got no authority to do it. This was negotiated at the time in two thousand nineteen between the parties. I looked at it. I had a lot of questions about it. Even if they could get a bond, there was no language in the consent judgment that dealt with what sort of adverse impact would we talk about? Diminution in pumping capacity, quality of the water. I've dealt with these, these before in mining pit operations in other communities, where there are test wells that go in, the water's tested every, I don't know, quarter, biannually. These geotechnical engineers go in, they put test wells all over the place, and they draw a radius. And if any of the properties within a defined radius are impacted, and we define in the consent judgment what adverse impact means, then the developer's on the hook to pony up and come up with some money. None of that's in here. So, even if they could get a bond, I'm not sure what the bond would cover. Having said that, it, it's not unreasonable to ask the developer if there's any other alternative. The parties must have thought in two thousand nineteen that water wells were an issue, or they wouldn't have put that provision in. You know, so it's up to the board. You are under no obligation to agree to an amendment, and the judge can't order it without the parties agreeing to it. But if they can't get the bond, you know, you're between, a little bit between a rock and a hard place.
But perhaps if the language was a little more concise of what defined what an adverse effect was.
You could.
It potentially could open up the bond avenue.
Well, then, the, well, but the question then is for what area? This has adjacent properties. That doesn't tell you anything.
Yeah, I mean.
Adjacent properties could be a hundred yards, it could be a mile. You don't know that. And the only way to determine whether it has an adverse impact is to have an expert tell you that. John and I don't know, nor does probably anybody in this room tell you. Just because they build five homes and the guy's well across the street goes dry, there's not necessarily a cause and effect between he built the homes and it went dry. There could be a million other reasons for it. I've listened to enough of these engineers explain it, and it's complicated. And you need somebody technical to do it. You may be able to have your engineer, engineering firm that has a geotechnical on, on staff, say, look, this is a simple fix. All we need to do is put a well here, here, and here, and we can tell you with some certainty, over some period of time, whether or not this development is causing an adverse impact. And if it is, and you got to put a shelf life on it, it can't be forever, maybe two years, three years, four years, whatever it may be. And if there is a problem with it, then they, they're going to have to put up some economic guarantees that they'll fix it, if it can be fixed. You drain an aquifer, you drain an aquifer.
In normal situations, there would be basically no wording that we would, I mean, since this was a consent judgment, we do have the option right now to request certain things that would normally.
It's up to the board whether you want to amend it, and if you say to the developer, look, we'll consider amending it, but we're going to expect that you make us some sort of a proposal of some sort to guarantee that adjoining properties do not have adverse impact on their wells. Again, I'm not qualified to answer what that would be, but, you know, you've got engineers that can look at that.
Would you be willing to have your engineer take a, maybe do some geographical engineering studies of, you have some test wells out there currently, don't you?
I believe there's test wells back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. I got the report I submitted to you. It's about the edge of my ability to understand it, so.
Right. Maybe we can get the terminology. And at, at what point in time are you guys looking to basically break ground out there?
It's ready to go tomorrow. I mean, he's, he's chopping at the bit.
I like this, I mean, I think on the mining operations where they drill a lot of wells, I think you're talking about a bigger area possibly. I think if we had three or four more wells out there, I think it may only hinder the, you know, aquifer may cause more damage than.
I'm not suggesting that as an alternative. I'm saying, experts can tell you whether or not there is some mechanism to monitor these wells. I don't know that.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to table this and have the developer come in with some alternatives to look at preventing an adverse impact, what can be done in lieu of just relieving the obligation.
Second. So, you mean, like a geographical study or some kind of a?
I'm not an expert, but I think that.
Just to address, I mean, this was a request of the township. Township's obviously had the concern, the developer, we don't even know what the concern is, to be honest with you. So, to have us come in and bring alternatives, we, we don't know what we're bringing to you. It needs to be better defined, I believe.
We're looking for a proposal from you from adverse, to prevent an adverse impact. An idea. Bob, do you, do you work with municipalities that deal with this issue?
Yeah.
Is there language that they've used that?
No, I could say, I've, I've done this on larger operations, and we, because it was a mining operation, they were digging, you know, a two-acre lake, that's an exaggeration, but it was huge. And they were seriously concerned about the amount of water that was drawn. And we had a, a firm that was a top-notch firm in the state of Michigan that came in and said, look, we can tell you with a reasonable degree of certainty whether or not this operation is going to affect these wells within this radius. And they put together this fancy chart with, you know, radius all over the place, and we had all the homes located on the chart, and we had test wells. They designated where the test wells would be, and they tested the quality of the water and the amount of pumping capacity over some duration. And they said, if we can get through this period, we're satisfied the aquifer is large enough to do it. So, it's, I know it's doable, but you got to, you know, you got to get somebody that is an expert in the area to take a look at it. You know, I don't know if AEW's got a geotech on their, on their staff. If they don't, there's firms that, that's all they do is geotech. But that's your call.
Is that basically the motion you're making, is to have a geotechnician, maybe?
I'm asking the developer to come back. I think that's a great suggestion for him to bring in a geotech expert that can show that there won't be an adverse impact to the wells, or at least a reasonable assurance. And maybe that could replace the bond requirement. But I mean, I'm, I'm looking for the developer to get creative. I mean, in negotiations, when you have obligations and you're, you're relieving someone of an obligation, you normally want something in return. Well, you can't get the bond, but we still have the concern about an adverse impact on our residents' wells. And that hasn't been addressed. So, I think we'd be remiss if we just accepted it. Thus, the reason for the motion.
What are your thoughts on that, John? Would you be willing to try to talk to an engineer and see if you can get some kind of a geotechnological study done on the aquifer that runs underneath that property?
Well, if this matter is tabled today, and that's a request of the board, obviously that's something we were going to have to do. I'm not happy about it, and my client's not going to be very happy about it. I mean, but the course we'll take, one of the courses we'll take.
Right. We probably wouldn't have much of a say-so in it at all if it wasn't for you guys signing the original consent judgment to begin with, you know? I mean, that would be up to the Macomb County Health Department, whether they would allow or not allow you guys to drill wells. But in the meantime, we do have the consent judgment in front of us. We got homeowners that we have to answer to that live in the community, you know, so. That's where we're at, so.
Before I go, and I'll do a little bit more research in this, has there been any actual concerns about aquifer and, and that you know, or anybody on this board knows of, or has been brought to your attention?
Not that I know of. I know that when Sheena's went in, I know that there were some issues with one of the neighboring wells, and the developer did step up. It was a shallow well, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a jet well pump. And the developer did, without going through any type of troubles, did replace that, that well at the time. I know there are some older, older homes that are in the area that are still, I think, on, possibly on shallow well or jet well pumps. And I think that that would be probably the, the people that may be most affected by it, I think. But in Greenland subdivision, I think that those are all on submersibles. You know, and they're probably in the aquifer, and I think that they're, but all the water's at around forty feet, and everybody's drawing off of, so. So, we have a motion on the floor to, basically, if you can come back with a geo, geological study of something regarding aquifer. And I mean, I know they got a way of figuring it out, like Bob said, because I've heard about it in the past, so. I think that, then we can put on, get it approved at our next meeting, you know, so. Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call data, please?
Billbrook?
Yes.
Crabb?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Trumbly?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, John. All right. All right. All right, moving on, item seven B is going to be Parks and Recreation bylaws. So, I'd like to have a presentation possibly done by, maybe Mike Trumbly. I don't know if you wanted to do it with both of you at all, regards to this?
I have a, I don't have a presentation. I have a script.
Okay. And then we can take comments afterwards, or is that with you?
Absolutely.
All right, Mike, go ahead. The floor's your.
Gary, I would be more polite and invite you up early. Thanks. Okay. Just to introduce, I'm Mike Trumbly. I'm a trustee, Bruce Township. Gary Kopp is a trustee from Washington Township. We were both asked respectively from our, our boards to get together, to come to an agreement on the Parks and Rec bylaws, which were in some sort of negotiation for eighteen to twenty-four months by the boards. Gary and I were able to come to an agreement that we both felt comfortable with. We didn't agree on everything. We felt it was an agreement that would work for both communities. So, even prior to the current boards at Washington Township or at Bruce, Washington Township was already trying to understand Parks and Rec and STAR, and how they impact the residents. Together, Bruce Township and Wa, this is the same script, by the way, that was read at the Washington meeting. So, everybody's getting the same information. Together, Bruce Township and Wa, this is the same script, by the way, that was read at the Washington meeting, so everybody's getting the same information. Together, both Bruce Township and Washington Township began to define the bylaws of the Parks and Rec Commission and agree on its mission and operation. Due to the difficulty of trying to define the commission's operations by both boards and come to an agreement on a new set of bylaws, a decision was made. To allow one member from each board trustees to attempt to work out a new Parks and Rec agreement. The proposed agreement is before you guys tonight. I reintroduce Gary. I also want to introduce Bob Seifert, or Bob Seibert. He's the attorney for both Washington and Bruce. So, with a positive vote tonight, the document will go into immediate effect, as Washington Boards has already approved the agreement unanimously at their, at their meeting. So, here's a summary of what the new agreement will accomplish. The current organization was and is not a legalized, recognized entity. It has not been since the inception in nineteen eighty six. We hear an attorney say today that there's nothing wrong with it, but we had three attorneys that disagreed. Bob was one of those. The other two were the attorney that was hired by Washington, and then Bob Davis, who was hired by Parks and Rec. They all agreed that they didn't know if it was under one fifty six, one fifty seven. There was debate. Bob Seibert had a solution. By agreeing to adopt this new agreement under the Urban Cooperation Act of nineteen sixty seven, joint power privilege and authority will be granted to the commission through the approvals of both boards. The new commission will be legally recognized as the Washington and Bruce Parks and Recreation Commission. Operationally, nothing will change with this agreement. A new five member commission will be appointed by the current commission with three members from Washington Township and two from Bruce. These appointments will be reviewed and ratified by each respective board. The commission will be a legal authority able to, if approved by both boards. To buy and sell property, sign documents, sue and be sued, and act as a legal corporation. All collected Parks and Recreation village funding will be a hundred percent contributed to the commission for Parks and Rec use. The commission will be organized with a chairperson, a vice chairperson, a secretary, a treasurer, and a trustee. All meetings will conform to the Urban Meetings Act two sixty seven, as amended in nineteen seventy six. Within ninety days from the date of the execution of this agreement, the commission will create a position description for the position of the director. Within one year from the execution of the agreement, the commission and director will agree on an employment agreement. Meeting locations will rotate on an annual basis between Bruce and Washington. If the commission is to be dissolved, the assets will be divided based on a five year historical average percentage of contributions. I'd like, personally like to thank Gary Kopp for working with me, for his time and effort on this endeavor. We both represented our respective residents. We both made compromises, and although not, without lengthy discussion, we discussed at length several issues and ultimately agreed on the final product. I would also like to thank our attorney, Bob Seibert, who recognized the legal entity issue and also recommended a solution. Now, it is in the board's hands to approve or deny this agreement. Gary, do you have anything to add?
Thanks, Mike. I really don't have much more to add to that, other than the fact that I would like to thank the Bruce Board for giving us the opportunity to spend some time and actually put this plan together. As Mike said, we didn't necessarily always agree on everything, but we came to a compromise and we settled it out. It took several meetings to get this thing done. And with the help of our attorney, who came up with the plan for the, the ultimate document, which you have in front of you, I think it's a reasonable agreement. I think it's fair. For both townships, and nothing changes from this. And I'll let Mr. Seibert, he has a slogan which he'll probably wind up using, nothing changed yesterday and nothing is gonna be any different for tomorrow. I'm paraphrasing, but you can get it right for me. But in any event, signing this document, getting this thing done today, nothing changes with Parks and Rec. The administration part of it changes. It becomes a legal entity. It can be sued and be sued. It becomes a corporation, which makes it a legal entity. And it'll be controlled by both of the boards. So, everybody has equity in this thing in terms of the ability to manage the commission, Parks and Rec. And again, like Mike said, a hundred percent of the money from the village will go toward support for Parks and Rec. So, again, once, again, I would like to thank you for the opportunity, and thank Mike for all the hard work that, that we put into this. The rest of it is in your hands. Mr. Seibert?
Now, I'll essentially say the same thing to, to this board that I mentioned to, to Washington. As you know, because I represent both Washington and Bruce Townships. I had and have a blatant conflict of interest, and I disclosed that several years ago, which is why Washington hired their own attorney at the time to attempt to negotiate a revision of the bylaws. Bob Davis was also apparently hired by the Parks and Rec. He met with the Washington Township attorney. They negotiated. They gave it their best effort. For whatever reasons, it, it did not come to fruition. And I was asked if I would look at simply the bylaws that Mike and Gary had put together. I indicated that's all I would do because of my conflict. I would not make any recommendations to either Bruce or to Washington as to who had the upper hand, whether one was more beneficial to the others. That's not what I do, and I was not about to do it and didn't do it. So, I met with Mike and Gary on three separate occasions to simply take the bylaws that they had drafted. I changed no substance, zero substance of those bylaws was, was modified. The only thing that I brought to the table was. I was, I have been concerned over the years and remained concerned when we met as to the legal status of the commission. I've spoken with Mr. Mean, the Washington attorney that was retained. I spoke with Mr. Davis, and I, I am confident. That, that the question of whether or not the commission has legal status is subject to a legal challenge. And despite what my colleague, Mr. Clark, indicated, who I have a great deal of respect for, I, I couldn't disagree more. I know the statutes that he's referring to. You know, reasonable minds can see it differently. I see it differently, and I see this as a perfect fix. And as Gary indicated, the residents of, of the communities that use Parks and Rec will see nothing different in the programming or the operation of the Parks and Rec program. Yesterday, and they won't see anything different if this is passed by this board. To the, to the residents, there will be absolutely no change. You're taking simply a, a commission of legal questionable status. You're giving it some legitimacy. And you've allowed members of both boards to try to negotiate the terms of the deal. They've negotiated it. Washington approved it in a six oh vote. And it, it's before this board now. So, this is their, their work product. This is not mine, and I, I wanna be clear on that because. It's, it's important to know that your, that your trustee and Washington trustee got together and put their heads together and came up with a proposal that they thought. Was in both parties' best interests, and I think I added something to it that needed to be added, and it's, it's as far as we can take it at this point. But it takes two, two to tango here. Without Bruce's approval, nothing happens. You're back at the status quo, and it will remain in the status quo.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
During the numerous meetings that we had, many residents came forward with complaints about some of the things that they wanted there to remain. One of them was the name of Romeo being a part of it. Why isn't it part of the agreement this time?
I, I can address that, or you can address it, but I'll, I'll attempt it. To be quite honest with you, I was arguing for it in here. It wasn't a sword I was willing to die on. Because the original Articles of Incorporation from nineteen eighty six state the following. The name of this organization shall be Washington Bruce Parks and Recreation Commission. Hereafter called the commission. It wasn't in the nineteen eighty six agreement that we were operating under. To die on that sword, which to me was not worth it. Because, because Romeo is a village. They are part of both townships. To me, the, the agreement is between the townships. The nineteen eighty six agreement was between the townships. So, it doesn't change anything. And what, what our objective was, was to keep Parks and Rec together, keep the programs together. This agreement doesn't change anything. There were things in some of the bylaws that would've changed things. They're out. So, we felt that this was, I felt it was a reasonable compromise, in my own opinion. Gary?
No, I absolutely agree.
Okay. I don't think it's a sword to die on.
Reason, may, may I ask, the compromise meaning that the, the word Romeo wasn't put in there because. You, somebody didn't want it in there, or is it because?
From the legal agreement, it doesn't matter. It wasn't in here. And, and Washington was adamant that it not be there. So, to me, it wasn't, it wasn't a sword worth dying on, because it wasn't, it, this agreement secures Parks and Rec, doesn't change anything.
You say, you just said Washington was adamant that it would have been.
Washington was adamant that it's, that it not be in there. And to me, that, that was not a point worthy of sacrificing the agreement.
So, the name?
Explanation as to why?
The, the fact of the matter is, is just as Mike stated, the original agreement, which everybody thought we were operating under, did not have the word Romeo even in the title or in the, in the name. So, to, to create a new title and a new name would have been contrary to the agreement that everybody thought they were operating under.
But.
Sorry? So.
I mean, don't you find it disrespectful that they have a building that is in their village? They give it to you for a dollar a year. And their name is now not included on this, and everything else remains, should, could remain the same. It's just Romeo's name should be in there.
This is a, this is, again, my opinion. This is a new document. It's a new day. It's a new commission, and I see nothing wrong with having a new name. So.
It feels a little like we're punishing Romeo.
We're not punishing anybody. I think, I think we're trying to politicize this. The legal agreement includes the Village of Romeo. The Village of Romeo could potentially have all five seats. There's nothing precluding that. Just because the name's not in there is, to me, a bigger issue than people are making out of it. If that's what's gonna stop the agreement, I think it's a poor judgment.
Well, I mean, it, no disrespect to anybody.
The original, the original agreement did not have it in there. We operated like that since nineteen eighty six.
I know, but a lot of the people.
Changed the branding. My, my opinion, my personal opinion is we shouldn't change the branding unless the commission agrees to, because the branding is what's important. That's what's recognized by the. This agreement here, no one's gonna really look at it. It's probably gonna get shoved in a drawer. What's important is the branding. And I like the branding personally, so.
If the breakdown of the vote is, Washington has more votes, and they don't, they are not interested in having Romeo participate or have a seat at the table.
Washington has a simple majority. For a long time, they were asking for a super majority. We had some backstops. The super majority is gone. The backstops are gone. A lot of the other requirements that Washington wanted regarding purchasing and all that is gone. That's all up to the commission to decide. To me, this is an agreement that continues the Parks and Rec. I would like to address some of the comments that were made too by the public. One is, does it continue the tri-community relationship? It does. It continues it. It continues it under a new, recognized legal entity according to Michigan municipal law. Remove the politics. Anybody who knows Gary Kopp and myself know that we're the least political probably of anybody on both boards. So, if, if that's, if that doesn't take the politics out, it doesn't, because our backgrounds are business backgrounds. We didn't grow up in, in the politics. We grew up in business, business case analysis, logic, rationale, judgment, and you can judge me by the questions that I ask from the board, from that chair. I'll let Parks and Rec continue. It does. This agreement doesn't change a thing on the operations of Parks and Rec. Legal standing, I already talked about that. Bob Seifert has an opinion. And then it excludes the village. It doesn't exclude the village. That's like saying that this nineteen eighty six agreement excluded the village. It did not. The village is part of both townships. So, my recommendation is that it be approved. I think it's a fair agreement. It's not everything that everybody wanted, but I think it's a fair agreement. Continues Park and Rec the way it is. Continues the programs that the people want. Continues the funding. I think it's, I think it's good. So, any other questions?
The, the, I mean, the Parks and Rec go back to nineteen sixty eight, so the nineteen eighty six Articles was not really the original, original agreement. It was the one we're operating under right now. And everything prior to the nineteen eighty six agreement, it was pretty much always mentioned as the Greater Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Rec.
Tri-community.
And I know in nineteen eighty six, that the reason why the, the Romeo came off of it was because we were gonna, that was at the time when we were gonna go for a village, and it was thought by the attorney at the time that it would be a lot easier. A lot more, I guess, not as confusing for the residents in the community. If it was just gonna be the, the village would be approved by the two townships. So, that's kinda why the name Romeo came off at the time. I will admit that the nineteen eighty six agreement does not mention the word Romeo in it any worse, anymore or any less than the, the current agreement does. And we have been operating under that nineteen eighty six, even though it might not legal and binding, but that has been something that we've been operating under since nineteen eighty six. We did have a revised edition that was put together nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety six, that again goes back to, I'm calling it the Romeo, Bruce, or it would be. Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Rec, which was never signed or never approved. Again, to have a simple word on the title of the document, to say Romeo, I don't understand why it is such a big deal not to have the word Romeo as part of the legal document. And I agree that Romeo could have all five seats at the table, because it is gonna be, the people that are gonna be on the commission are gonna be picked by the commissioner, the current commissioners. But it just doesn't make any sense that we would not, you know, include the Village of Romeo's name on it, you know, like, you know, that's all.
My, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Mike. I argued that point also, but I also had to get to a point where I thought we got to a fair agreement. So, I would say if you look at the agreement as a whole, it's a good agreement. There may be a couple of things that people don't agree with from both sides, but to me, the overall agreement is good. So.
So, I know that we've been working on this for a really long time. I don't think anybody knows as much as I do, because I mean, I've been at every meeting that's been going on and trying to get this worked out and resolved. And I don't know how many meetings we've actually had between the other board members and joint meetings and so on and so forth, and. I'm, I'm really glad that we're at this point. It's just a matter of just trying to resolve this over one word, but it's definitely, it's a principle that's involved at the same time.
The content of this agreement got rid of a lot of things that would've created some problems, I think, for the community.
Do you mind if I, we hear from a few more people? Maybe I think that there may be some other people that might wanna speak. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for everything, you guys. I really appreciate it. Hey, Claire?
Thanks, Bob.
Hi, Clara Russell, Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm thankful and appreciative to all of the residents for all of the times that you've come out tonight. In the past eighteen months to talk or stand up with the Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Recreation. I am happy that this intergovernmental agreement is to the point that it is. In Washington, I brought up or voiced two major concerns, obviously the name. I'm gonna ask that you don't pass this tonight just without amendments, like if it could go back to Washington because of my two concerns. The concerns are obviously the name Romeo. If Romeo, I understand that it's Washington, Bruce Commission, because you are the townships and you are the ones who take the taxes in. But even if, and it might not be good enough for Romeo, but even if somewhere in there, I would hate to see the name Romeo, Washington, Bruce, Parks and Recreation go away. It's been with us for forty years. The people know it. Our logo, I don't think you could stumble into a logo that spells out one. I mean, it's a perfect description of what our department stands for. So, that's number one. Number two is the check writing. I have concerns about that. That's on page seven, under Treasurer. So, I'm great, five, two, I think it's a, a good number. I, I fear, or three, two, sorry, for five altogether. So, in the past, how it's done is that the supervisor, the treasurer, and the clerk are normally the signers at the township. Parks and Recreation and Star, different agreement altogether. But we do our checks weekly. We take the checks to the township, because we know that those three individuals at each township have an office, and we can always find them. So, our checks get signed. But it worked out before, because it was always the supervisor or the clerk who was a commission member. When that was changed, now we have a commission member who has a full-time job. When that was changed, now we have, um, a commission member who has a full-time job and is off-site, who wants to approve our checks. So we email now our edited list so that the commission, or whomever is in charge of it, looks at the edited list. If they have questions, they call. Once it's approved, they email back, but the checks are signed at each of the townships. And then we just hold them in our safe until we get approval from both sides. So what is here in this paragraph, I just don't think is going to work. I would definitely hate to go backwards and try to do the one-time-a-month check signing. We're too big for that, we have too many checks coming out, and I just think it would cause a lot of chaos. So I would like to see this amended, um, I would like to see the name amended. And then I, I don't really understand, um, and I should have asked this before, but the dissolution. I, I don't know what that, I don't understand the concept or how that's going to work. Does that mean if you dissolve, does Bruce Township get to keep all of their property that's, uh, in their township? And Washington keep all of their property that's in their township? Or is a value put on it and it's part of that equation? Those are my concerns.
The properties of the township, I belong to them today, they do not belong to Parks and Rec, so there's no splitting of properties.
So those properties stay, so then you're just looking at anything else.
Bank accounts and stuff like that.
Okay, just a question. So those two things, again, I want to move forward with the intergovernmental agreement. I think that Parks and Rec gets a bad rap a lot of times because everybody is saying all the things that aren't getting done or the commission has pointed those things out. But they have not gotten done because we have been two years doing this, COVID before that, and issues before that. So we would like to, probably more than anybody, get things done, so I thank you.
Thanks Clara.
Thanks Clara.
Other than those two points though, Clara, you're good with this?
I know no better, we're going to do what we do.
I just want to clarify, I just want to restate, nothing's actually changed with the new articles, other than a few items like that. But with the logo, all the logo, everything's going to stay the same, the name, there, none, none of that's going to change at all.
Well, that's.
No, the, the agreement does not change the logo. The old articles were what Bruce and Washington, yet our logos and our branding is different. Nothing in this changes the branding or the logos or the letterhead.
I didn't.
Nothing that changed, yeah, that's, that doesn't change anything. It's up to the, if the commission wants to change it, they could. But right now, that, that nothing, this agreement doesn't change it. And I, personally, I think the branding should stay because everybody recognizes it, but it's up to the commission to decide.
Additionally, they're, basically the new articles are no different than the old articles primarily, and the wording, I mean, there is wording, but again, the Village of Romeo was mentioned twice in the new articles now, it's basically from the, the village dividing line of thirty-two mile road. And it's, I don't even think it's mentioned even then in the old articles that we've been operating under since nineteen eighty-six. But everything else is going to stay the same, it's still going to be all.
I just fear that you pass it tonight and I'm so unsure about that check signing. I mean, it's a, it's, it's going to cause havoc is really what it's going to be, so I don't know if it's something, I don't know why that would be a hill to stand on. Do you know what I mean? That we're going to have to have, sorry, no, please.
That we're going to have to have, signers on the accounts must be the chairperson, treasurer and one commissioner. So I, and these are the positions that are in this, um, new intergovernment agreement, right? Not the, I, I don't know the reasoning behind that, or if, if it's simple enough that we could have it changed because what is happening is working. I mean, as many people as you want could look at it and approve it and ask questions, but.
Clara, this, this doesn't go into effect immediately, you're not going to have any impact to your check signing immediately. This only goes into effect when the new, when the new ones is affected. So my recommendation is if that's what you're concerned about, bring that up to the commission, the current commission. And they could recommend an amendment to this. If it doesn't make sense, the check signing is going to make, make it awkward for you, for you, then, then, then they can make a recommendation to change it that might make it more streamlined for you. I don't think it, I don't think it's a reason to stop it, that it can, that it can be amended. Because the objective was not to make things more difficult.
I would like to believe that, honestly, I would love to believe those words. I, I don't get that. I saw the commissioners who were there for Washington Township, I saw them removed. I see and feel how I feel for the last two years since this thing started. I mean, I'm really trying not to cause any problems, but if we want to change something, why not just change it and amend it? And just say, okay, well, check signers will be these people at the township. I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I, the village, or the Village of Romeo's name being in there, I'm going to let you fight that one. But the logo, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't in here just say, otherwise known as Romeo-Washington-Bruce-Parks and Recreation. Forty years, so now I'm going to have to fight five people who I don't even know. I know you guys right now, and I know Washington right now, so why wouldn't I ask the boards to do it? Because that's important, not just to me, but it is important to me. And it's important to all of our staff and you, everybody says nothing is changing here. And, and I'm good with it because the, we have been fine if we've been working illegally for the last forty years too. I mean, we've been doing it. So I'm good with all of the restrictions or different ways you can fire me or whatever you want to do. But I think our name is super important right now, and I think the check signing, because unless there's a reason behind it, why not change it? Done.
Good evening, everybody. Christine Melzon, Village of Romeo President. So with all due respect, Trustee Tremblay, dying on a hill or not dying on a hill is a load of crap. To be perfectly honest with you. Romeo continues to welcome residents and officials from Washington Township into our village, in your home of Parks and Rec. The same with Bruce Township residents. To say that a name doesn't matter, that you're not excluding it intentionally, when we gift you that property for a dollar is so disrespectful and a slap in the face to every resident who you both represent, Washington and Bruce Township. You say you represent us, which is why Romeo doesn't need a seat at the table. I'm sorry, sir, you are not representing the Village of Romeo in any way, and that's alarming to me. We have had a great working relationship. I am fearful as I see Washington Township insist that Romeo is excluded. I see the slippery slope that Parks and Rec is heading in the same direction that we saw WBRW head. That the Romeo Library was able to stave off, right? I implore you to please do not pass this tonight. Romeo needs to be represented on that commission because clearly you are not capable of doing that in the best interest of Romeo. I just have a couple of other points that I don't know if you considered when you drafted the bylaws. Are you planning to vacate the facility at Romeo on Morton Street? Or are you planning on continuing operations there? I ask that question. Does anybody have an answer?
I think I would ask people on the commission, what are your plans?
We had no plans of vacating the property on Morton Street.
So then anybody look at the lease. Because we have a lease. And I would specifically point to Article nine of the lease, which says, "Leasee shall not assign this lease agreement or any of its rights, responsibilities or obligation arising hereunder without the prior written consent of the Village of Romeo Board of Trustees." Because right now, this lease is with the Romeo, Bruce, Washington, Parks and Rec.
I mean, I'm not trying to doubt what you're saying, Christine, but again, if we look at the, and I'm just as neutral and you've seen me, I mean, I've, I mean, I've been at every one of these meetings and I, you know what I stand for. But the articles that we're operating under right now doesn't state any of that at all. It basically, if you haven't seen a copy of the nineteen eighty-six articles, which we're currently functioning under right now, doesn't mention Romeo at all in there.
But it also included reference to the previous articles, of which you did reference. The other ones, the original Articles of Incorporation are rolled into the new ones by reference. So therefore Romeo, for whatever reason, was excluded at the same time that representation of a Romeo resident was removed from the commission. So I would argue that point with you, that Romeo isn't specifically listed in there, so therefore not included. I also disagree because I believe with, with Mr. Seaver's findings, that Bob Davis said that the articles are invalid because I believe he wrote an opinion and presented that opinion at the last joint commission meeting, stating that they were lawful and a bunch of reasons why they should. And I'm not a lawyer, right? I didn't understand it, but I sat in the room and I worked arm-in-arm with you and Sam Previtty so that we could together come up with the solution. And at some point, it was handed off to two trustees, again, not including Romeo in any of the conversation. I had hoped that calmer senses would prevail and that you all would realize how important this asset is to this entire community. We must stay together as one, because if not, we are divided, and you know the old saying, united we stand, divided we fall. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Christine.
Am I allowed to speak again, or is it one, one per customer or that's it?
Just keep, keep, yeah, just keep it.
Just a couple of things before I burst into flames. Uh, I have a, a copy of the Washington Township Board of Trustees Meeting, May the fourth, nineteen eighty-three, following a review of the Parks and Recreation Commission Articles of Organization. It was moved by Brainard, RJ Brainard, who I believe was the original director of Parks and Rec, the youth center, Mr. Corey would know that. And it was moved by Mr. Brainard, supported by Trustee Riley, to adopt a resolution for the creation of the Greater Romeo-Washington-Bruce-Parks and Recreation Commission. And it passed unanimously. It's always been the Greater Romeo-Washington-Bruce-Parks and Recreation Commission. And I say, I implore you, when people tell you who they are, believe them. And you heard Washington Township is adamant that Romeo be taken out of there. This is, these, these proposed bylaws or this reorganization is a shiny object. Look at this while we're doing something else. They've got the votes, three to two. The camel's nose is under the tent. You're going to lose Parks and Rec and shame on you if you do. And I, I really hope that you reject this. Again, you're going to lose Parks and Rec, don't be part of it, thank you.
Anybody else? Richard still here? You're hiding back there. Why don't you come on up to the podium, Richard?
I don't know what more I can add to it, you guys have to take a vote and.
We know what we got to do, we just, I think he just wants to hear what you have to say.
Mike, I don't, you know, I'm a Romeo guy, so you know how I feel about, you know, the name Romeo, you know? I bleed Romeo red.
You, you were elected back in nineteen seventy-two to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah.
So you have a lot of history in regards to Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I ran, I ran the youth center and then, you know, I helped start Parks and Rec. And it was always that, what was it, Mark, Greater Romeo-Washington, it was, the logo was this long, we hated it, but it included everybody.
But you guys shortened it after that because of that reason.
I think I was gone when, in eighty-six, when they did it. Well, good luck. Those, those seats are hot.
So back in nineteen, oh, I see back in nineteen seventy-five and nineteen seventy-six, the Village of Romeo drops from membership in the commission. Do you know what the reason was for that, Richard, by any chance?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Back in nineteen seventy-five and nineteen seventy-six, the Village of Romeo dropped them, from the, drops membership from the commission. Do you know what the reason that was for?
Seventy-six?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was in the village, but I, I, I was out of the, uh, the recreation business.
Does anybody know the history?
Mark knows.
Mark? Still here?
Well, I don't know of personal knowledge, but what the heck, who cares about personal knowledge anymore? I can tell you, I think the reason that Romeo was, I don't want to say removed, but why the millage changed is because there shouldn't, or people didn't want three votes on three different millages. You had the village in two townships, so the village is going to vote on a village, the township, Washington's going to vote on a village, Bruce is going to vote on a village. I, I believe the thinking was, well, if we consolidate this, let the townships vote, the village doesn't have to vote separately because we get taxed anyway. I mean, the township, the, the village residents in both townships pay the tax. I own property with my business partner on the south side, the bad side of the village, on Washington Township. And we pay the Parks and Rec tax, we, we pay our property taxes to the township of Washington. And on the north side, we pay them. So I think it was an effort to simplify the funding. But in nineteen seventy-five, I was either a senior in college or my first year in law school. I didn't live in Romeo, so I don't know, but that's what I'm offering.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clark.
Hi, Mr. Philbrook.
Hi, Dan, how are you?
Board members.
Dan, why don't you state your, obviously your name.
Dan Dacowski, Washington Township trustee, but I'm also the Parks and Rec Commissioner.
Thank you.
Representing.
Washington.
All communities. I was going to start my talk a little bit differently, but I'm going to start it a little bit differently. And that's based on what the attorney from Romeo just stated, when he referred to the south side of thirty-two as the bad side of Romeo. That's not putting your best foot forward. Sorry, it's not. If you're going to work together, then work together. I think all of us want the right things for the communities. We want the parks fixed up. The parks are in shambles, with the exception of the Bruce Park. Gilcher Park's not too bad, but there's not much amenities there for residents. The Washington Park doesn't have any amenities for residents, other than a tennis court and a pickleball court. No pavilions, nothing. These are things that we're just now starting to talk about. So in forty years, rough math, even if you just use one million dollars a year in millage, that's forty million dollars that was collected. And what a shame for what we don't have in these communities. What a shame for what we're not giving our residents. We can give them so much more if we work together, if we cut this nonsense, and I believe it is nonsense. We're worried about paying the bills. Maybe we don't need to pay them weekly. Most businesses out there do net thirty, net sixty. Pay them every two weeks, there's alternatives. Worried about collecting signatures. Gee, none of the Romeo District Library members have an office there that they need signatures from. They've been managing very well for years. The name Romeo is Mr. Philbrook, or excuse me, as Mr. Tremblay and Mr. Kopp had stated, the branding's not going away, why would it? We just want to get the agreement done and we want these parks fixed. And we want things done right. We want three bids. You know, we, we just want things right. The bylaws have been. The bylaws have been holding back development while we're still collecting residents' money. And we're throwing it in the bank or we're throwing it away because we're paying people for doing things like in COVID. There were no cutbacks. There was nothing. It was irresponsible. Had we had a responsible commission up there, they would've said, wait a minute, we need to do things a little bit different. And there's nothing wrong with doing things different. There's nothing wrong with growing. I live with it daily and I believe most of you do too. So let's move this thing forward. Let's get it off-center and let's work together. That's my pledge to you, is to work together. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else wanna speak on behalf of the Parks and Rec? One more. Nathan, how are you?
Nathan Bartholomew, two-nine-eight North Main. What the gentleman that was just up here before me said was not true. I watch all the meetings and apparently everything's going great. Everything's been going great. The parks are looking good, they've got all these plans. And he just stood up here and said, it's all doom and gloom and we gotta get things right. Things have been going right for a long time. Things have been fine. I think the biggest problem we have here right now is that even though we got rid of Dan O'Leary, we still have that same mentality within some of our trustees in Washington Township. Separate, separate. Not, forget tri-community, let's get rid of the name of Romeo, which he would just totally love, but separate. Well, we've been a tri-community forever and it's been like that since I was a kid. I mean, we never even fathomed separating. It was, no one ever even thought of that. So please turn this down because it's not right. It just seems to me there's just so much hatred from certain people that they're asking us to bend, well, just leave the name on there. That's it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Nathan. All right, Marilyn, come on up.
Marilyn Bichowchin, seven-zero-seven-nine Middle Cough, Washington Township, Michigan. And Jess, I'm a Washington Township resident. I started going to the meetings once Total Sports was announced in August of twenty nineteen. I don't understand why no one ever said anything. Our parks are bad, this or that, until all of a sudden, they're just horrible. And as a Washington Township resident, because I can't depend on my board, at least several people, I'm asking you to turn this down. Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn. So I know that if this gets turned down, who knows if it's gonna get improved. It's been a long time to get to this point and we're so close. I think that the main issue, it seems to be that the Romeo's not on as, on the title. I think everything else is staying the same way as it was before. There was never a commission seat for the Village of Romeo prior. I don't foresee that that's gonna happen unless it comes through the new commission and something the new commission can go ahead and have done. The Village of Romeo can have all five seats at the table. Depends on who the commission would elect. To put the word Romeo on there, I mean, Dan is the other commissioner for Washington Township. Is there a big issue with putting the word Romeo on, um, articles at all, Dan? That you could? I don't think we're gonna have a problem with the Bruce side, but...
That is not up to me. That is up to the board. Our board has voted. Our board voted unanimously, including Sam Previti. So it's not up to me. These two gentlemen spent a lot of time. You know, we wanted to get back to business, Parks and Rec. They themselves admitted that they weren't doing things in the park. We got the, we're getting, we got the water fixed up there, Thirty-three Mile Road, we got that park fixed. We're getting the trails done there, we're getting the grading, basketball court, the pavilion. We finally got some picnic tables coming for a couple of other parks, six each.
But at the same time, we haven't, we haven't got to complete articles, put together, you know? I mean, we may be doing things, but the most important thing is that we've been working on articles.
Well, we also, no, the most important thing is taking care of the residents.
Right.
And spending their money correctly. And doing what they expect us to do. And that's to give them the services. Give them a place to sit in a park. Give them a place with their family. We do great with coming in and having crafts and fishing and everything like that. But our park can use some help. You know, you can go into the Thirty-three Mile Road Park and that's been like that for many years. Let's just put our arms around it and let's just keep fixing it. You know, that's the one thing that we did at the RDL. We put every issue that we had at the RDL. And one of the things that was so simple was, well gee, we're freezing in these three offices back here. Well, why, why are you freezing back there? Well, we have no vents in the room. Wait a minute, they make flexible vent stuff. You can take it, you can put a drop down into the ceiling in each one. Mr. McNauton, can you get a price in it? Sure I can. He went there, he got a price, he brought it back to the finance committee of which I was on. We took it to the board and the board approved it. And it was a cost of like six thousand dollars. Issue that they had fought for five years to get resolved. This is not rocket science. These are Parks and Rec and we're here to turn around and give recreation to the residents. I mean, I remember when I was a kid and my parents pulling over to this roadside park. There was always a picnic table there. There was a little barbecue grill. There was a trash can so you can clean up after yourself. And you enjoyed it.
Right.
Let's enjoy it.
But we're getting off track.
As far as to answer your question as to have the name there, that's not up to me.
Right.
I, I think it's a great agreement. I really do.
By Mr. Dukowski's old words, he said, it's your job to give the people what they want.
I heard him.
The people have said, leave it alone. That's what they have said over and over again.
But we're not changing any of that, Christine. You know, I mean, it's... All right, Dan, that's enough. We're gonna probably put a motion together, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I do wanna say one last thing.
Make it quick, Dan, please.
I keep hearing about this dollar rent for the Romeo building, for the building on Morton Street. And Washington Parks and Rec pays nothing.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, does somebody wanna put a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with a recommendation that Commissioner Philbrook bring back to the existing commission to revisit some reference to Romeo and to revisit the signing. Those are the two big issues that I heard today. But I think by approving this agreement today, we get this as a recognized legal entity under Michigan statute, reduces the risk. It, 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 we spent a lot of time on this agreement. If you take the agreement as a whole, it's very, very good despite some opinions from certain people. But I think if you take a look at it as a whole, it's, it's really a great agreement for the community. So my, my, my motion is to, to accept the agreement and make a recommendation, Mr. Philbrook, to take some of the feedback here regarding the reference to Romeo in the name and the, the check signing responsibilities for the new commission.
I believe this is a good, good, good agreement. I think you guys did a great job. But again, I don't see what the big, big deal is about adding one word in there. And if, if, if that's such a big deal, that, to me, that's a red flag. I'm sorry. And one other thing I'm gonna add. Here's a lady that's been in thirty-plus years. She knows the process really well. Why hasn't anybody talked to her about, you know, the, not, not that you didn't talk to her, you know, maybe you didn't know. But maybe you oughta listen to her a little bit about how bills get paid. Get her input on it. You know, just 'cause the grass looks green on the other side, doesn't mean it's always green. Might be a little colorblind there.
You're seconding Mike's motion?
No, I didn't second it.
I think you did.
That's considered a second. When you, when we have a conversation, you don't really need a second, so.
I don't know how that would work. Would that be considered a second on Mike's?
That's not a second.
He didn't second.
No, he didn't second the motion. Nobody seconded the motion.
So if nobody's gonna second, I guess the motion's gonna die. Does anybody have anything else that they wanna add or? I mean, at this point, I guess if we don't have a motion, what ends up happening, Bob?
Well, you have a motion without a second, which means there's no support, which means the board does not approve the agreement submitted.
Then what happens if there's no addition? I mean...
Then you have no agreement with Washington.
I make a motion that we accept this agreement under the conditions that the word Romeo gets added into it.
I would second. The check...
That's something they could probably work out.
Do they commission? I would support that wording, the condition.
No guarantee, though, that that would happen, so.
Well, so you're clear, this will have to go back to Washington Township then for their board approval. Okay.
How are you suggesting adding the word into this document? So we have some specific requirements? Just, just the name? Just the definition of the name?
Interlocking up on the top where it says interlocal agreement, establishing Romeo/Washington and Bruce Park and Recreation Commission.
Does that mean that Romeo will not collect their own village?
No, we'd still collect it for them.
You just wanna change the name, you just wanna change the name of the commission? Is that what you're suggesting?
Right.
Just the title of the document. It's not, it's not asking much of Washington.
No, it's not.
So you just wanna add the word establishing the Washington?
Establishing Romeo/Washington and Bruce Parks and Rec.
So just change the title.
And, and, and paragraph one. Paragraph one would then say the parties agree to establish the Romeo/Washington and Bruce Parks and Rec Commission.
Where's that?
Page two, paragraph one.
Oh, under establishment of commission?
Establishment of commission, right.
So you'd add the word Romeo there, too?
I wouldn't. That's what the motion is.
Yeah. I mean, Lee...
I don't care what you call it. It's, it's the board's decision as to what it's named.
I think that's what, that's what you're suggesting. Correct?
Yeah.
So there would be a change to the title and there would be a change to paragraph one. And as long as, there's also paragraph twelve on transfer of assets. Now, that would stay the same because it's currently the Washington/Bruce Parks.
Well, we defined it as commission, so commission is generic throughout the thing.
No, no, I get that, but in paragraph twelve, it refers to the old commission. Okay?
That's the only change you're recommending?
Yep, that's it.
Would you also recommend that Mike take back this check signing issue to the board?
Yeah.
As part of your motion?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second by Tremblay. Any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please, Dana?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
No.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
One more time, Gary, you want me to go with you? Okay. Thanks for your help, though. Yeah.
It's a real simple fix.
Real simple, you guys just gotta put the name on it.
And thank you too, Bob.
That's it. If it's such a big deal, then we must be looking at a shiny object.
You don't have to make up your mind tonight. We'll talk, we can talk about it more. But thank you all for coming out and supporting.
That's all right. We come to your town all the time. I love coming to Washington. In fact, I was there today, shocked.
Were we able to ask for Craft what the reasoning for her no vote was?
I live in the village and the township. I live in the village and the township.
You have no obligation to answer.
I'm just asking, right? She doesn't have to answer, but I'm serious as to why people would know to approve Romeo.
That would, yeah, it would be up to her if she would like to answer.
I live in the village and the town, and Bruce, so.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Don't like to divide and conquer, so.
All right. Okay, moving on.
Well, did we leave off?
We have some people here waiting. So let's move on, item, um, item seven C would be the Powell Road Improvement Project. And then we got Supervisor Paterak here, Director Brian Santos, Mr. Crum, if I'm not mistaken, from Macomb County Road Commission. And then we've also got the village president, Christine Mills, on here. Did JP never show it or he was, is he running late or much later? He is not available. Did you guys, Ryan, did you wanna go ahead and present this at all as far as what was going on or? Thanks for being, you know, sitting through those. Thank you.
You're very welcome and good evening Supervisor Philbrook and Bruce Township Board members. What you have before you is a revised cost share agreement. I know there was one originally sent out, I think it was early December of twenty-twenty-one, which had a lot higher numbers on it. So we were able to look at actual numbers. That was based all on estimates because we didn't have a project bid yet, we didn't have the design completed yet. So that was all based on estimates, which we do for all of our projects when we send out cost share agreements. But this one fell in later. Obviously, there was a change in the cost due to the economy currently, due to gas prices, oil prices and inflation. So you can see that the price went up from one-point-five to one-point-seven or north thereof million. We were able to narrow down the design. We had estimated, which is normal, ten percent design cost. And that went down, so we have all the design complete currently. So we're looking at about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, a rough estimate of that. So that reduced the pricing also for the cost share agreement. This process started back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen with community outreach, with community leader outreach and industry outreach for the Powell Road corridor between thirty-two and Thirty-three Mile Road. As you're aware, with previous administration, we as a road department and a county have partnered with Bruce Township. One example is the roundabout at Thirty-three and the connector to M fifty-three. We partnered, that was a need-want of the township. We partnered with them as a department and a county to facilitate that need for your Thirty-three Mile Road corridor and your industry. This project also is of that same nature. There was leadership outreach as well as a huge industry outreach to repair Powell Road between thirty-two and thirty-three. So there was a submittal. Original submittal was by the Village of Romeo. But in addition to that, on the application for federal aid, there was not enough money cumulatively between the Department of Roads and the local communities that surround Powell Road to do it as a local project without federal monies. So the request was to put it as a project for the federal tip, the FAC, Federal Aid Committee. That was done in October of two thousand eighteen with the Village of Romeo as the initial applicant. But it also has, on the west side, Washington and Bruce. It doesn't go far enough south to hit Washington, so they're not a participant. And on the east side is Armada Township and Ray, doesn't go far enough north to reach Ray. So it does have the three entities on the submittal. In the cost year, it is a local road as designated. And our policy at Department of Roads is a sixty-forty split. So it'll be forty percent Department of Roads participation, sixty percent local community, which would be the three adjacent communities, Village of Romeo, Bruce Township and Armada Township. And that is split twenty percent through, for those three entities, forty percent to us. So as you can see from the original submittal in December, the local match for the communities was north of a hundred. So as you can see from the original submittal, in December, uh, the local match for the communities was, uh, north of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, with revised pricing and more accurate information as far as bid pricing, design costs, that went down to just north of a hundred and twenty-six thousand as far as participating costs with the communities. So we are requesting that that cost share agreement be approved tonight. Uh, this thoroughfare connects to your community also, connects to your thirty-three mile road corridor. Obviously, it does touch your township. Village of Romeo is in your township. Uh, you do get a tax base off that also. I live in the Village of New Haven, but I pay both taxes to the village and Lennox Township. But this is a fair agreement that we're asking participation for all adjacent communities, so.
So, you know, when I met with you and JP down at your office down there, I knew there would be a little bit of, you know, issues, and I'm glad you guys did come back and you did drop the price down on it. And we appreciate everything that you've done in McComb County Road Commission, the TIP program and everything. We do look forward to having some improvement, uh, infrastructure improvements done in our community. Obviously, we need them in more ways than, than one. As you stated yourself, back in two thousand and eighteen, Bruce Township did make a huge investment on the roundabout at thirty-three mile road to service our industrial corridor at a cost of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We're still paying on that, um, infrastructure improvement at a tune of forty-five thousand dollars a year for, till the year of twenty twenty-seven. So we've got a lot of money and a lot of skin in the game already on that infrastructure and on that, um, industrial corridor. Technically, we don't border the, the Powell Road at all. The east side's bordered by Armada, the west side's bordered by the Village of Romeo. As a matter of fact, the Village of Romeo, um, is a thousand, still goes a thousand feet west of thirty-three mile road on, I mean, west of Powell, on thirty-three mile road on the south side. But we do agree that it does service our industrial corridor. We do feel that it would be a great improvement to get our semis on and off thirty-two mile road, to use that as our main thoroughfare to get into our industrial corridor. We just don't feel, and I'm just, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the rest of the board, but I think that the rest of the board would probably have their own opinion that it should be a thirty-three percent split between all the communities. So that's what we're kind of at. I mean, I've got, I mean, obviously Christine Melzahn was gonna be here regarding the Parks and Rec Commission, and I know John Paterak's here, so we got all, all the key players in the room. It's Mr. Crum showed up. I, I would think, we, we know that this is about ready shovel ready as you can get, right?
Correct. We started, yeah, probably in August.
Right.
Sometime in August.
I mean, does anybody else wanna have any questions at all, re, uh, ask, uh?
I, I know, when you do residential assessments, when you do road paving, people that live on a road next to the road that's being approved don't pay anything. Bruce Township has no property on Powell Road. Why would we pay one-third when the other two communities have a direct benefit and we have an indirect benefit?
So you have no tax base off of that property, the industry?
We have no, we have no industry. We, we do not own property there. The village owns it, and Ray owns it.
I think we received one mil worth of tax, if I'm, maybe Christine, Frank, maybe, you know.
It still remains, I guess, a thoroughfare and corridor to your industry corridor on thirty-two mile-
Yeah, but we're being asked to share an equal amount when we get an indirect benefit versus a direct benefit. That's what I find a little inequitable.
If I can refer back, as Supervisor Philbrook had said, on thirty-three mile road, that was not a priority precedence for the Department of Roads at that time. It was a culmination of facility of accessing thirty-three mile road of M fifty-three with that. There was a request from the Bruce Township Board and Supervisor at that time to do that. It really was not in our best interest. We didn't have a road there previously, but we still participated. We ran the SIB loan through our, uh, finance department, and we oversaw that project, putting in our workforce to do that also. So we're just asking for participation with a corridor that is adjacent to your community and does facilitate your thirty-three mile road corridor also.
Yeah, we don't, we don't disagree with you, and no disrespect, but we, we just, we're struggling as a township financially. And, um, but to pay twenty percent, I think, is excessive. I would agree that ten percent.
Well, it's, that doesn't, well, thirty, yeah, well.
I mean, when we put, when the roundabout was put, put in, Romeo didn't pitch in any money for that, and they had a thousand feet.
Bruce pitched in four hundred thousand dollars.
Pardon me?
Bruce pitched in four hundred thousand for that.
Right.
No other community did.
Romeo had eleven, uh, a thousand feet on thirty-three mile road, which would give them access to that roundabout, and, you know, there was no cost share there with them.
And I don't have the numbers in front of me. Do you know what the total cost of that project was, as far as overall?
Uh, I thought it was around one-five, if I don't-
So who put in the remaining portion of that fund?
I think the county did, with four hundred thousand coming from Bruce, but no other joint community.
Which is a substantial amount above the four-
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just looking at the equity of, of this from my perspective.
I don't know what went wrong on that project, but I originally, I heard the numbers were only supposed to be around ninety thousand to the township. And I'm not looking at you guys, but it, I, that's what the numbers I originally remember hearing. But needless to say, we did pay four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, like we were saying, Brian, and we do have that still on our books right now. We're paying it every year. Our, our annual, I guess, operating expenses is not that much, you know, and we, we're on a payment of forty-five thousand dollars a year to take care of that right now. I mean, I mean, we were gonna make a, a, a look at it, maybe a possible difference. It would be Romeo to pay fifty-five percent of the, there's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's outstanding that we need to look at, and that would be our share between our three communities. And if fifty, if the Village of Romeo paid fifty-five percent, that would be two oh nine, three sixteen, which we feel that they boarded the majority of the property there. And then the Village of Armada would pay thirty-five percent, which would be one thirty-three, two hundred, which is about what he's paying right now. And then Bruce Township would be paying ten percent, which would be thirty-eight thousand dollars on Bruce Township, and that still gets us to your total amount. Like I said, we have the other community members here. If there's any, maybe we can try to discuss this. I know it's gotta be done at board approval, but maybe we could look at something like that. I mean, we definitely wanna see the road, um, improvements done to the road.
Any comments about any of those?
Christine?
Do you think what your tax base is off that industrial area?
That, Frank?
I can't tell you that off the top of my head right now.
It's pretty substantial, and what I ask is, how often do you invest dollars, the taxes that you collect, into the Village of Romeo? For everybody that pays a dual tax, which you do collect tax from, how much investment do you give back to that tax base?
I don't know of that-
Important question.
I, I'm, I'm not gonna give you a complete answer, because I don't know the answer, and I don't like the answer or anything. But I know that we may receive tax base on it, but how much actually ends up into our general fund, it may not be that much. I, I think that Frank will-
I'm curious.
Yeah.
It's not. It's, it's like one percent. There's a small slice of the pie that we get. It's not much.
I don't know what the total is either, that's what I'm asking, right?
There was infrastructure that was put in in two, twenty oh seven, and no fault to nobody who is here or whatever. The economy took a tank. We went into a deep recession, and that kiboshed all the people that were planning to build in our industrial corridor. And we're still struggling to, to fill those vacancies up. And before they started, no disrespect, but before they started annexing property, they should have focused on Bruce Township, all that empty land that's over there to build and, and bring in businesses. Instead, we're still in the hole, paying for water, sewer, every month, we got, almost every month, we got a loan money from the general to the water. We're struggling.
You and I both know what it's like.
I mean, look at this township hall. It looks like crap. We have to fix this, fix that. We got that ARPA money, and it's practically all gone. You know, but yet I go to other municipalities, and they're living like kings.
Well, not Romeo, because we got fifty-five thousand dollars in ARPA money. I don't know what you guys got, but, right?
I'm not, I'm not talking about you, but I go to other places. I see that they, they seem to be doing pretty well with the buildings they have, the office furniture, all that stuff. Go take a walk around our township hall here, and look at all the furniture we have.
I, we're getting off, we're getting off track a little bit.
No, whatever. I'm just, I'm trying to make a point here. We're struggling financially.
I understand that.
And I, I, I'm all about pitching in and working together, but we have to look at the facts.
I understand that, but when we committed to the process, which wasn't me either, right? This came out of, we, 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 but our predecessors committed to the process, and I think we have to follow through with what they agreed to.
I understand.
So, and that, that was-
I totally agree.
But did they agree? Do we know that they agreed? We don't have a signed agreement. I talked to Richard the other day. He didn't remember.
Yeah, Richard did not agree to this.
Yeah, go, yeah.
As a member, excuse me, John Crum, Director of Planning for the Road Department, as a member of the Federal Aid Committee, you, uh, have a representative that sits on that, that board. When this project came up to be approved into the new TIP, uh, all three communities approved it. That's where the vote happens for the federal aid. So, um, as, as it sits today, the federal aid is in this three-year TIP window. And if it's, if the locals don't, um, pay, pay the shares, um, then that federal ma- money is not matched, and the project isn't done. I will say that I was there at two thousand and eighteen. I'm not gonna get into debate of who was promoting what, but I will say that, uh, there was heavy influence that we do something, and we did that year. We put in, uh, within our pavement preservation program, uh, we did a couple of, uh, areas in there that were really bad, with zero cost share for the local government. So, that's, that's kind of the background that, that we stand with.
No, thanks for doing that, too. It did help us out. It made that intersection a little better at thirty-two and Powell also.
When would this money be due?
Immediately.
Immediately?
That, we, we could work with the communities. I mean, if you're struggling, you know, um, obviously, as part of this cost share, it, it requires money upfront, uh, but if there's SIB loans or additional loans or, uh, things, obviously, we don't wanna be Bank of McComb. We struggle, obviously, with getting enough money to fix all the roads within the county, as everyone can well see. So we make our money go as far as possible with cost share agreements with the communities to make our dollars go farther within each community, so.
We're, we're, we're looking at this, I mean, we're looking at trying to do the same thing. We're still trying to put improvements in the community. Obviously, the thirty-two mile road and mound road area that we would like to do a joint chair with, uh, Washington.
Understand that, but this, this was prior to that.
Well, right.
I, I agree, yep.
We, we do have money that we wanna invest, but at the same time, to have zero frontage on that road, I mean, it just, it's, it's just hard to swallow. I think that our board, I think I can, I possibly can't speak on everything else but the thirty-three thousand at our board, the two hundred thousand from the Village of Romeo, and, uh, you know, I think we could, you know, make it work, but it's, you know, it's still the same amount of funding, but it's just all on, on frontage.
Mike, I think your distribution is more equitable to the three communities based on the direct benefit.
But it, it's not just, uh, up to Bruce to make that decision.
No, but I, I like your proposal.
Just presentation.
I think your proposal's fair.
Christine, you gotta admit that you guys have all the frontage on the west side of thirty, on Powell Road, and it, it does service that whole industrial corridor down there. We don't have any-
I'm not arguing with that at all, Mike. What I'm arguing with is that it was agreed upon when the submission was made, and I would expect that you honor that agreement, because-
So technically, there was no agreement back then, because I, I, I know that Richard Corey's here now. There was, the, the, the request was made by Mike Lee back in the day, and it was supposedly, there was wording that it was approved by the boards, but it was never approved by the board. I, and Richard is here, and I did have Richard come here to, to clarify that this was never discussed or approved at our board prior to our administration.
Mr. Crum is, is saying something completely different.
Right.
That it was approved by-
I think-
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not gonna say I'm a lawyer, but the federal aid has its own charter, it, own, own charter and requirements, and, um, if the community votes there, then it's saying that it will, at the year that it, that the project comes up, will do the share as we typically do. If it's a local road, it's sixty-forty. If it's a primary road, it's fifty-fifty. And that's the portion that isn't covered by the federal aid, which at this, this point, you're having eighty-one point fifteen percent of the project funded by the federal government.
But you're saying our previous administration approved this project?
Your representative that came to the Federal Aid Committee, when we, when we start that meeting, they're all, uh, either the township supervisor, city manager, or a designated representative that can vote on projects.
Would that have been you back in the day, Richard?
Um, prior to the meeting, I spoke to Mr. Santo, and he said the meeting was at L and L, and I, I didn't attend it.
Well, no, that was, that was industry meeting, in, in the field. That wasn't through the TIP or the FAC. There was a meeting previous to that with industry leaders.
Okay.
Yeah, but that was, but that wasn't part of the FAC process.
As part of the Federal Aid Committee process and the TIP monies, we don't force feed any community to accept a project that they're not willing to or able to pay.
Right.
That, that defeats the purpose of allocating money to projects in the future if we don't have enough money to cost share, to match money to the federal funds. So it, it's not force-feeding communities. It's working in conjunction and acceptance of the communities to work with us, getting federal monies to move forward with projects. So there were three entities that just did touch in some form or fashion and capacity, and that was part of the FAC process and the TIP allocation of funding for twenty to twenty-three. This was really plan, planned for twenty-three. It was advanced construct. We did do a temporary patch job, as John said, at our costs. Didn't ask for any cost share from village or either township, and that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to our coffers from our program. We could've spent elsewhere, but there was a need. We saw that. We saw the outreach from the communities, from the industry leaders along that corridor. And now we're at, where we're at today, trying to move this project forward.
Can we listen to what Supervisor Paterak just got to say from Armada, please?
Supervisor Philbrook, board, um, in our, in our case, um, I remember when, uh, Mark Hackel, McComb County Executive, called us down to the corner of Powell Road and Lansing to explain the, the Powell Road reconstruction. At the time, we were moving forward with our, uh, development dreams of water and sewer and, and seeing businesses go up. Plus, we also knew we had a responsibility for an REI Corton, a large trucking company located on Powell Road, along with some proposed, um, development in the Phase Two project there. Since things have changed for us, uh, with the annexation of our, uh, industrial corridor into Romeo Village at the request of the property owner, we lost seventy percent of our developable land and a, and a good share of the road itself. And the reason we stepped to the table was because of REI Corton, who's now owned by Dan Ross, a Canadian firm. So, um, part of the road even does fall in Ray Township. On the, on the south end, actually, Ray Township was annexed into Romeo Village as well, um, from thirty-two mile road, maybe three, four hundred yards north, so, um, that was all annexed as well. But I, I think, um, with our villages, Christine, it's a point seven-two-five mils, uh, is what we collect on our, what are your operating villages?
For our general, twelve point five.
Okay, so the income we generate off of what is there and the income that Romeo Village will now, uh, realize out of the property that was annexed from us is nowhere comparable, uh, to what's gonna go on, uh, considering that, uh, a substantial, at least half the amount, not half, but the phase one part of the project already had, uh, septic and well, uh, and was annexed for water and sewer. So, um, we lost a substantial, uh, area. We have thirty-three acres of developable land left in our industrial corridor now. So, um, if they're gonna, uh, be able to collect twelve point five mils for their operating, and I'm gonna be able to collect point seven-two-five mils, we went to the table, uh, to offer our support because we had that property and because of our plans to develop, which is now gone. So, no, I don't think twenty, twenty twenty is, it's changed, and it's-
Had nothing to do with Brian or the county, uh, Road Commission for fixing up our road. I get that. It was the REI Corton trucks that, you know, we came to the table, and it was for the development of our industrial corridor, which we don't have privilege to anymore. So that's my statement, and I'm sticking to it. And, um, you know, and no whatsoever heart feelings for Romeo Village. They're doing everything they can for their taxpayers. I wish I was so tenacious, but, um, we lost it at the request of the property owner, not at the request or at the, uh, willingness of the township or the village. So I don't wanna get into that they did something wrong to us.
No, I know that.
So, but we lost it. It's gone.
John, you're, um, you're, even at twenty percent, you're still gonna be paying more with the, if they, if they did go on to different percentages. If you guys paying thirty-five percent, it would be another seven thousand dollars more than what you guys have already approved.
You know, I can't speak from a board. Um, I can only say that it's a whole lot more reasonable than a hundred and eighty-something. So, which our board was willing to come to the table with because we were developing our industrial corridor. But now that we don't have it to develop, I would take that back to my board, and I would ask them to support that. I, I agree with the formula that you came up with, and, and I don't know if it's scientific or not, but Ray Township is on Powell Road, by the way. They really don't have a pony in the race. They don't really have a lot of stuff coming through there. I understand what the county's saying about our corridors. I stood with Bruce Township, Richard, on the, on the ingress and egress off of thirty-three, and sent letters of support and stood right by him to get that thing done. Because I knew ultimately if we developed our industrial corridor, that would allow our, our people into our area too. Nobody charged me a dime for that. You guys didn't ask for Armada Township. You, you know, we all know we needed to get on and off the road at thirty-three mile road in Powell, whether we were in Armada Township. That was about the north end. It wasn't about Bruce Township. That was about the north end. And that's, I think, where I probably lose the most track is the fact that it's supposed to be about the north end and, you know.
Okay.
We have to open up, you know, we have to get rid of some of the dotted lines and some of the, what I gotta do for myself. I can't put bricklayers in downtown. I'm just glad we have ADA access to all of our buildings but one. So.
Okay.
But that's where Armada Township is. We don't, that, that is our only industrial corridor, was anyway.
Okay. Thanks, John. So Christine, you, originally, before they did some work and they dropped the price down from, it was one-eighty-one each, I mean, at the sixty-five, at the fifty-five percent, you guys would be paying basically only twenty-eight thousand dollars more than it would have been originally, you know, from the one-eighty-one that we're looking at. I mean, I mean, I, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the thirty-eight thousand oh fifty-seven on behalf of Bruce Township. I think John said that his board would be willing to go ahead and pay his portion.
He doesn't hold on.
Right, exactly. I understand, you know, so, but we would like to see the project get done. But again, I mean, Ray Township actually borders more of that road than we do. And Washington Township borders just as much as Bruce Township does, you know, so, I mean, and we're not looking at Washington.
It doesn't sound like it's the village of Romeo's decision on how their bylaws and, and how the road commission operates. So, I, I, you know, I would defer to Mr. Santos to say, you know, if it's customary procedure that it's split equitably amongst sectors, right, then I don't know how you, how, how you weigh that.
I, I guess we require match money for communities that are adjacent to the projects that we do. If there's a mutual agreement between the communities as far as to that split and the equitable distribution of that cost based on the revenue that's generated off the adjacent properties, that would be acceptable to us. We just need to have the match money for the sixty percent total. In our, our cost shares, just, just for information, our cost shares, and, and you can see it through this project, but, you know, obviously, the cost increase as far as the bid than we originally had because of inflation and the price of things now versus the end of last year. But our design went down considerably. I anticipate our construction engineering, which is a CE that we base on a percentage of the contract cost. I, I don't see that approaching that. Our cost estimates are a high factor of safety per se. We don't want to undersell it and be asking for money more from the communities. So, we overestimate to be on the safe side. Do I think this is going to reach the total amount for each community, including ourselves? I don't. Somewhere around probably the six-figure mark, low-six-figure. I'm anticipating, just looking at timeframes, the type of project. But there has to be an agreement on the three communities, and we would accept that as far as the mutual benefit of the three as far as a percentage split.
And if, and if there isn't an agreement, right, if we can't come to consensus, then what happens? The project get pulled?
We would look at potentially losing the federal funding and pulling the project. The most that the department can pay in, in, in our policy on local roads, our primary roads, as all the communities know from our meetings and multiple meetings, primary roads, we split fifty-fifty as far as a cost share. Local roads, we split sixty-forty, and that's been for decades. That's before my time, and I've been there twenty-eight plus years. The most we can pay per Act Fifty-One funds is fifty percent on a local road for this type of construction. So, if we have no funding as far as a local match from the communities, this project does not move forward because legally, we can't pay more than fifty percent.
So, you could up yours ten.
That's not our policy.
You said you could. I'm just asking.
That's not our policy. I'm just stating guidelines that we have to fulfill through the law of Act Fifty-One regulations. So. But as far as the distribution.
John Paul was the only smart one, did not come, you know.
Probably why he didn't come.
That's why I'm throwing it down. But if there is a mutual agreement between the three communities as far as benefit and, and lack thereof, we would entertain that as far as adjusting the cost share agreement to match according. If that can be.
I mean.
We would hate to lose one-point-six million in federal funds.
Federal fund.
I mean, we went through the whole process with community leaders, industry, to obtain this federal funding, and we would hate to lose it and not be able to use it in our communities in McComb County.
Yeah.
That would be a huge waste.
We, we also looking at thirty-three mile road still being a Class B road, and we know we need to invest in that infrastructure in the near future too. I mean, we've got, I mean, our money's all spoken for, and we're just, we still want to be a participant, but we just want to make it affordable, that's all, for what we're, we're getting in return. So, I will make a motion right now for the township of Bruce to approve funding for thir-, uh, ten percent of the cost share between the three communities, approximately thirty-eight thousand fifty-seven dollars towards the Powell Road reconstruction project.
Second.
Second by Susan. Do we have any other discussion? Let me get a roll call, Dana, please.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Trembling?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. So, did you need those numbers any, you know? Fifty-five for the village of Romeo, which would be two-oh-nine, three-sixteen. Thirty-five for Armada, which is one-thirty-three, two-hundred. And ten for Bruce, which would be thirty-eight, two-fifty-seven, which would put you at your three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, three-eighty-five-seventy-four.
Just a point of clarification. I mean, we, you guys can, can vote on this and support it, but as they said, I mean, they have, their boards have to go back and.
Yeah, so we've done our part, so they're good to go on their end.
I just want to give them the opinion that tonight we were just dealing, we're not dealing with the other communities.
Yep. And, I mean, I'm sorry. I wish we could just write you a check for the whole thing, to be honest with you, you know, so.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the, please keep up the good work.
We're trying.
Send, send on JP next time.
You, you guys don't get paid enough. No, I, just keep going because we can only go to ten o'clock by our, our own.
I know, I haven't had much more. I gotta go to the bathroom.
Oh. Well, some of these might be easy, right?
That's gonna be easy. Actually, we should be able to get through it pretty quick.
Mike, I think your proposal was fair.
Yeah, that's a fair proposal.
Yeah.
Bobby, you want, I think we're done. You can stay if you want. You look like you're comfortable.
I'm getting kicked out?
Stay all you want.
You got a small, you got a small amendment to do, maybe.
Matter of what?
You got a small amendment to make, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna, well, we'll see.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna keep working on this with Mike and Gary and see what, see what happens.
Thanks, Bob, for all your help.
Take care, Mike.
Appreciate it. Nice working with you.
We'll keep at it.
I know.
Not over till it's over, right?
Have a good one.
See you later, Bob. Take care.
See you, Bob. Okay, moving on. Item seven D, the twenty-twenty-two limestone program fuel surcharge that was added to our original agreement, which is two, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars additional, which is, um.
Is this the same?
Our original cost was.
Thirty-eight fifty-five. So, are we approving the extra three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars?
So, we paid two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy, two, twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And that was back in May because the fuel was, it's kind of gotten crazy. They have a fuel surcharge that they're now adding, which is twenty-two, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which brings the total cost of twenty-nine-thousand and twenty-five dollars, which is still ten percent of what the total cost is basically that, that, that Mr. Santos leave. So, the county's actually paying two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand of the cost. I need to get, make a motion to go ahead and approve the fuel surcharge of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Or is that different?
Yeah.
What are you talking?
Approve the increase.
What is it?
Aren't we just approving the total increase?
Yes.
Yeah, the thirty-eight fifty-five.
Yeah, so the motion's got to be thirty-eight fifty-five, Mike.
Wait, um, what's, what's thirty-eight fifty-five?
Just, just approve the increase.
That's not, that's not the right numbers.
That was what we were given at the time the motion was made, and then it came back twice.
I know, but the check that I, I took out was for twenty-nine.
Because the original check was written for the amount on a second, on a second sheet that we got. There was two different proposals floating out there. The amount that was approved at board was the twenty-five-one-seventy. The first time.
So, the three thousand is higher than our policies.
All you gotta do is approve the increase.
Okay, we'll improve the increase, even though we just took the check out to collect it, right?
Yep.
We did. It's already done.
All right, somebody else make the motion.
Make the motion to approve three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for the new bid with the fuel surcharge included.
Second.
Twenty-twenty-two limestone.
Second.
Second by Tremblay. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Trembling?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Item seventy, Acumen.
Chief.
Yeah, I mean.
Dave.
Yes. Yeah, I think I have this.
You got that.
It's a different one than what was in the package.
It's updated.
This actually is, has four communities.
Right.
In comparison.
Right, right. I think, I think I have some, some. Okay, so.
Yeah, so, we stumbled upon this last month because you notice the incoming revenue from Acumen, usually it's between thirty and fifty thousand. And I think you walked in when.
Jody was there.
Yeah, so we called them, and they gave us an explanation of what was going on.
Sure.
Um, they asked if we went, bent through the, the program, which we hadn't.
Correct.
So, she came in to show us how that program worked.
Sure.
And while we were there, I mean, it came up in conversation with Acumen that there hasn't been any increases, I think, since two thousand nine. Or, yeah, two thousand eight.
Right.
With EMS. In two thousand nine, ALS was raised from six-fifty to seven-twenty-five, and they sent us the suggested fees.
Sure.
Um, so, based on what we're seeing, and they also sent us a comparison of other communities.
Yep.
Without their names.
I have that too.
Agency A, B, C, D.
Right, right.
So, based on, you know, what we're seeing, the suggested fees, we feel that it's, you know, time to raise these fees.
Sure, what?
Somewhere where they're suggesting.
We could go through these real quick, and maybe I can help explain some of them to you a little better?
That's fine.
I mean, I don't know if she went through it with you or not.
She did a little bit.
Vaguely, yeah.
Okay.
Then we went through, because the other sheet has suggested, the ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, if you, you can, you can go ahead and strike out manpower, vehicle equipment, and extrication, because that's part of our cost recovery program, that we use Acumen bills, but we bill that to insurance companies.
Manpower extrication.
Mm-hmm.
And what else did you say?
Vehicle and.
Vehicle and equipment. So, that's what we use in our cost recovery for motor vehicle accidents. It's still billed from, through Acumen, but it's billed to the at-fault party.
Okay.
So, insurance.
Do you have a rate that you bill? Isn't it, is the rate on this table?
It's, it's based off the McComb County. Here it is, right. This is the McComb County Fire Chiefs Association billing schedule for cost recovery, so that's what we use. Okay?
So, I think the proposal is to keep those rates the same as they are today.
Right. And then the restocking, the defibrillation, the wait time and oxygen, those, according to Acumen, get bundled, so they're not separate charges that are billed to insurance companies.
Right.
Those four items automatically kind of get bundled up into the ALS emergency section or, or portion of the budget.
Which, which elements are those?
So, those are restocking.
Yep.
Defibrillation, which goes into the ALS portion, wait time, and oxygen. That goes all into the ALS transport, what Medicare, Medicaid, or Blue Cross will pay, so.
Except the wait time, she was pretty insistent on that, that, especially if you have two people waiting, that that's a number that probably should be higher.
Right, because we do the non-emergency transfers.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, our non-emergency transfers.
So, if we don't bill those separately, should we add those amounts to the ALS emergency numbers?
Well.
Did you come up with a better rate?
Yeah, we need to, we need to come up with a, a, improved ALS emergency fee. I agree.
And I'm assuming the number in, pen to the right is assumed without those fees in them?
Which one are you looking at?
Suggested fees?
This one with the, all the way to the right-hand side?
Yes.
Take it, these are the.
All the way to the right-hand side where it's written in, these are, these are the suggested fees.
But that doesn't take into account what Dave just told us, that these four items are part of ALS, right?
Right.
So, these numbers that you have here have to be bumped up.
Essentially, those get bundled into the ALS bill.
Yeah, my question is, do these numbers need to be bumped because those numbers aren't in that number, and that's how they get billed?
Bumped, you mean raised?
Bumped higher than what's recommended because you're missing seventy, twenty. You're missing a hundred and ninety dollars.
So, I, I think.
That, that the chief just said gets bundled.
Our biggest concern should be mileage, for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, we're in the, the very low end of mileage.
Right.
That's, would be a significant increase, along with the ALS emergency.
Do you think the eighteen is fair? Eighteen dollars for the mileage? A mile? That's a mile.
Yeah, I'm just looking at your documents.
I think Agency A is Washington. I was surprised at their fourteen-fifty. I got their numbers, and, and they correspond with this, so.
I mean, who, who put the eighteen number?
Frank and I did.
I did.
Oh, Frank.
Yep. So, I mean.
With gas.
They're giving us a comparison of what these other agencies are doing.
Sure.
But you know what? I really don't care about the other agencies, okay? We're Bruce Township.
Right.
They got different tax bases. We got different tax bases. We gotta charge accordingly, as long as we're within their, their suggested rate, we're fine.
Right, because there's a set amount that Blue Cross is gonna pay.
You make sure you're within the range of an acceptable dollar amount.
Right, right, agreed.
Not gouging, but working within the suggestible range.
Right, there's a, there's a, you always want to aim a little higher so that the acceptable amount that Blue Cross, Medicare, and Medicaid will pay will be covered.
Yep.
Starting at that number and getting beat down, you're losing money.
Right.
Agreed.
So, we need to increase this, correct?
Agreed.
How often do the insurance companies, Medicaid, or they ever, do they contest the fees at all?
We, we get contested fees, you know, maybe a half dozen a month. And we have a third-party billing company, Arbor Professionals, that you see that, you know, when, when, when Acumen is exhausted, there's resources of collecting the funds, they send it to Arbor Professionals, and we'll get three to six of those a month.
Right.
You probably see those, Frank. So.
Is this something we gotta vote on, or we just use this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, you gotta vote on, on rate changes.
So, vote on the increase you guys suggested on the column?
Yeah, it's on your sheet, your sheet right here.
So, what about when you go to the retirement places where they?
Right.
I know you'd go there often. Is there, don't some communities bill them directly?
Um, we, we, how we've been doing it is we're just billing them as residents. I mean, that's their, their residents at them facilities, so. We don't build a facility.
You talking about transports, or you talking about actual?
Yeah, she's talking about like Orchard Grove or Wild Bridge. Yeah, she's talking about like Orchard Grove or Well Bridge.
Lift, when you lift assistance, or whatever they call it, you know, when you are, are, just pick someone up from.
Yeah, you're saying like, non-emergency transports.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do half dozen, half dozen of those a month, but we bill for those.
Right, and that's billed, and you build, even though it's at one location, you build it as a resident.
And we build it as two transports, we take it, say, from Well Bridge to facility, facility back.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
Okay.
I mean, if we, if we just manage our numbers a little better, and get within the suggested ranges.
Right.
That's where we need to be, and I agree, so. Did you sit down with Lynn at all, Lynn Cowell, took over this, or just?
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, I had her on the phone.
Okay.
Yeah, she went over it all.
No, sounds good, I mean, if it's. Good, yeah, help us out, for sure.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Well, I still have a question. The chief said oxygen defibrillation, restocking fee, and wait time are not billed separately, they're bundled in the ALS emergency numbers. So given that, do we have to bump those numbers by the recommended amounts of those four items, which is a hundred and ninety dollars for each ALS line item? If they're not billed separately, we're not gonna, gonna capture those dollars?
We're only gonna capture the amount of dollars that's required for your documentation on the ALS run that Blue Cross, Medicare, Medicaid will pay. Alls, alls Frank and Susan are saying is we're gonna, we're gonna increase our suggested fees to try to recover the maximum value we can recover. Right, that's what we're, that's what we're saying.
Yep.
That's what AccuMed is suggesting, too.
Right, for sure.
Yeah, it was, yeah, was there some.
I still don't have an answer to my question.
Well, oxygen's gotta stay on there because BLS calls still require oxygen without it being under.
The chief just said they bundle those four in ALS, so.
Yeah, it says, so, it says these get bundled into the base rate and are contracted off because they aren't separately payable by insurance companies.
So that's a hundred and ninety dollars.
So you built, so it's bundled into the ALS emergency?
Correct, correct.
I wonder why she didn't mention that.
Yeah, she didn't mention that, at all.
So. But I think with your proposed eight fifty, that. You know, I think puts us within the means of suggested fees. But I mean, just looking at your top ALS emergency proposal.
Uh-huh.
And then so on, so. I mean, we could give Lynn a call and.
Yeah, well, we could go with this, and then she has suggestions, otherwise.
Right, correct, just make some minor adjustments.
Right, okay.
One of you guys wanna make a motion?
Well, are we adjusting those fees for the hundred and ninety, or, or no?
We'd say we call, what's her name, right, Lynn?
Lynn.
You gonna get some clarity?
Yeah.
How are you gonna do?
So who is Lynn?
She's a rep at.
She's a billing, she's in.
Billing.
She does the billing.
She's kind of a subject matter expert at this information.
Yeah.
She gave us this, she put together this chart with the four communities.
Okay.
She's a billing expert.
Any other questions, Mike, is?
Nope, good.
We got a motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion to uh, accept these fee suggestions as presented. With. Any changes that Lynn might recommend in the bundling process. Does that work?
Second.
Second by Frank. Any other discussion?
I, I have a question about ambulances. Uh, you told us at one point that like, they're like six hundred days out or something, uh, so shouldn't we be ordering an ambulance in the future?
Yeah, so they're about two years out, yeah.
Yeah.
So with the new ones coming in, we'll be at three new, and we'll have to work on. It's, it's.
So the question is, you're gonna have to recalculate your, your planning then, right?
Right. And then, just on that note, I, I, I checked status again on our ambulances, and, you know, our representative from Braun is not getting the full answers. So he's taking a trip down to talk with people to see really what's going on with the, the process of getting chassis, so. I'll know more Friday, and when I find out, I'll let you guys know.
So we might be ordering a ambulance at the next meeting?
Yeah, cause it's two, two years out, so.
Yeah. So any update on the drone? Have you used that at all?
Oh, no, we haven't had any uses for it, but we need to get training on it and get more guys certified, so, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion, any other discussion? Roll call?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft? Yes.
Okay, uh, item, motion passes item seven F, media upgrade.
Okay, so already there's a um, different proposals since that one.
Chief, if you're interested?
So this first proposal that's in your packet includes a couple of things that we'll need, uh, for example, a TV and a large screen TV and a cart for it to go on.
So these are two different.
So the one I just gave you is that, he sent this to me this afternoon.
The thirty-three seven eighty-six number?
Yeah. Thirty-three, yes. And some, from some of the description, you can tell what they are, um, cameras, obvious, controllers, the tricaster, we'd actually trade this one in and get a new one?
At a previous meeting, we approved seven thousand dollars.
Yes, oh, okay, so that was for the touchscreen, and then I went back to him and I said, would it be better to, this is end update, to do it all together? And he said, yes, so that's why I'm just giving you, we already did approve that uh, touchscreen, but if we wanted to do everything at once, it would be um. Cheaper to do it this way.
Was bundled and cheaper to do it this way.
So is this seven thousand plus this, or is this seven thousand in this?
Seven thousand is included, so.
Seven thousand.
Is included in this.
Yeah. So it would be.
Where's the touchscreen?
It is. Um, you see, on this backside, number one, TSC, the third one down.
Okay.
And that would mean, you know, hardwiring all this, this would get put up so it's not at your knees all the time, and um. It would be HD instead of what we have now, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, how did, how did we come up with this list?
So they came out and kind of gave me a lesson on how to operate this, and then at the same time, uh, told me what we'd need to upgrade. This only SD, so eventually, you know, it's kind of grainy, eventually we'll have to do something.
Yeah, the quality of the picture is, is grainy.
This is twelve years old, this uh, system.
So this will improve the visual quality?
Yes.
Will it improve the audio?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I mean.
I, I, I don't know if you wanna do this now, you wanna wait, I just thought as long as we were talking about that other item that, uh, you know, we might wanna be proactive, so.
But this proposal is good till seven twenty-nine, right? What I'm reading back here?
And see that.
On the back.
Yeah, prices are.
Valid for thirty business days.
Eight nineteen, it says.
Oh, okay, that's on the other one, alright, come on, so.
And this uh, four twenty-eight date is just when we initially started, he came out that first time. And you can see the price has changed, just from, I copied, I printed this off last week, and then this is today's price, and it already changed.
I mean.
So what are we thinking?
What, what about the YouTube and all that, I mean, is that?
They'll all be, still would stream live on YouTube, just the way we're doing it now, but just updated uh, equipment.
Updated equipment to get better visual, better audio.
So are we doing something, I mean, I think we'd also, in, in addition to technology, we need to have some documented processes. And the reason I say that is, the last meeting, only fifty minutes was recorded, and we've had some, some meetings where it wasn't live streamed, so. I think, I think in addition to technology, we also need some process improvement, if we want to get to a, kind of where we were before, we severed our ties with our provider.
Part of that was that this was getting, you know, moved around and played with, and opened this, and, cause I didn't understand the whole process to begin with, and I'm better versed, and I got Jacob helping me.
It's bolted. Yeah. You mean, okay. Okay. Yeah, I just think it's more than technology, though.
Yeah, well.
Do you need more time on this, Mike, or did you, you feel comfortable with this?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not a technology expert, so I just have to rely on, if this is what's needed to get us to a different level, then.
These people are, and they, they uh.
We're not good where we're at.
They, they work with everybody around the state, I mean, the state of, uh, State Senate, they do all their filming, they work with Washington, they're all over the state, which is why I felt comfortable just getting that one bid. Cause they are part of the Mitten process, too, the Michigan International Intergovernmental Trade Organization, so they're, they're.
So very credible.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we uh, accept this bid and move forward, replace it, update it.
Can I just, can I just amend that a little bit, Frank?
Yeah, do what you gotta do.
Think that we need to make a motion that includes uh, in this case, only to make a one-time exception to our purchase policy, to accept the bid proposed for media upgrades from Advanced Lighting, who participate in Mitten. The state contracting licensing, licensing system as presented. Can you hear my motion?
Second.
Okay.
Second by Frank.
I'm gonna ask a quick question, just for clarification, cause I don't, I'm not obviously seeing what you have there with no presentation, but did you guys go, you voted to sever ties with MIT TV for, I think it was like four thousand dollars or not to exceed using the equipment here. But I thought that motion also included revisiting.
We did last month.
Did you revisit it? Cause I, I'm sorry, I didn't watch the meeting, if you did, so I'm sorry if I'm interjecting, it's just a question, like, did you end up revisiting that, because that was part of your motion?
Yes, we did last month, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Glad you. Okay.
Um, it still says that we gotta buy, owners gotta still provide a TV for the tricaster output of the virtual meeting feed. Is that the TV we have back there now?
That is if, uh, if we want, it's not included in this bid, so if we want one, then we have to provide it, but I don't see any reason why we need to. I can go through some of this if you want me to. I took notes on all the, what, all this stuff is.
I have, do we know other people who have used this company?
Yeah.
Can they vouch for the.
Oh, yes.
The competitiveness of their pricing, the quality of their service?
What I'm told is that even if you get a bid from someone else, it's gonna include, it's gonna involve them in some way.
Do we know what other communities are using this company?
Across the state.
Okay.
This was a company.
They installed the system that we currently have.
Pardon me?
They also installed the system that we currently have.
Oh, they did, okay.
It's half the cost of our annual media kind, less than half, I guess.
And a one-time purchase, hopefully.
How many, yeah, for how many years?
Well, this one's lasted twelve, although it hasn't been used as much recently.
How much do we have invested already, do you know?
Uh, less than two.
Less than two thousand?
Yeah. And we did approve that amount last month that will go toward this.
We need to.
So we're approving this in lieu of what we approved last time? In lieu of the seven thousand? Was that in the motion?
No.
I think it's gotta be part of the motion.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. What, did you make a motion? Second by Frank. There's no other discussion, we get a roll call, Dana, please.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes, yes.
Moving on to plan, uh, planning commission appointments, on item seven G, I'll make a motion to go ahead and reappoint Randy Kent. As a planning commission member from six one of twenty twenty-two to six thirty of twenty twenty-five.
You wanna do both at the same time?
And also, uh, sure. I'll reappoint a planning commission member Jared Vincent from six one of twenty twenty-two to six thirty of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second by Tremblay, there's um, no discussion, can we get a roll call?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Item seven H, appoint dangerous building inspector, um, which basically gonna be replacing Jeff Fritz, um, would be Mario Evangelista with no expiration.
Second.
Is that H and I together? What's the difference between H and I?
One's dangerous building and one's just a.
Oh, so are we doing dangerous building first?
Yeah, it's a separate.
Okay. Thank you.
So second by Frank, um, can we get a roll call, Dana?
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Um, item seven I, appoint construction board of appeals Mario Evangelista on expired term of Jeff Fritz, but it is an expired term, it expires on twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Be expired twenty, twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Mike Tremblay. Any discussion? We uh, do a roll call, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes. Okay, moving on, item seven J, planning commission zoning coordinator position. I'll talk briefly on it, so.
This is the new A scale.
Okay.
We had it in the wrong category before, so.
Okay. So back at our April meeting, we talked about the full-time position for the planning zoning coordinator. There was a motion by Tremblay supported by DeGiorgio to authorize. Um, the creation of the full-time planning zoning commission following a process consistent with the hiring of the de- deputy treasurer, uh, that was hired at full-time. So I know that process has been met, that um, I guess it would be the. The application process was on the website for a month of time, you might know the process better than I do. In which we had to follow as far as, needless to say, we had no applicants come through, I think it was.
Well, we had one.
One applicant, and then um, that's our current, our current um, employee. And then also, we did go through the interview process and union, uh, union process, everything that we needed to do. So, um, at this point, I would like to make a motion.
Let's make sure we get the wording right for the.
Motion to hire Dana Buchanan at a four-year wage, that's according to communications to the union representative in the union. At the level of general office clerk with starting salary of thirty-three thousand, four thirty-seven, year beginning July twenty-fifth or August date, with fourteen and a half days credit as full-time employee and two-point-eight vacation days.
Uh, the two dates there are, you have to pick one.
I'm gonna pick July uh, twenty-fifth. That was, that was the new pay, that's new, next pay period?
Yeah.
So that, um, that's five days, so that would go, and that's gonna be retroactive from what, the half a week or whatever, so, I know Rondo figured it out. Well, that's the new pay scale, right?
Right, right, so she's, she starts officially on the twenty-fifth, yeah.
We're halfway into it. Okay. On the twenty-fifth, then.
So Monday.
Did everybody get that? You want me to repeat it again?
Let's hand that to.
Yeah, you can read it one more time.
Let me read it one more time, Frank. Motion to hire Dana Buchanan at four-year wage only at the level of general office clerk with a starting salary of thirty-three, four thirty-seven, year beginning July twenty-fifth. With fourteen and a half days credit as full-time employee and two-point-eight vacation days. As a planning and zoning coordinator, uh, position.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Tremblay. Do we have any other um, discussion?
I just wanna comment that I still don't think this is a full-time position.
Okay. We need a roll call then, Dana, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Craft?
No.
Philbrook?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay. Moving on to, uh, item seven K, COVID policy.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the CDC's guidelines for COVID, um, press context, context.
The new guidelines, changing day to day.
We'll have a copy.
But, um, do we really have to make a motion to adopt it, or don't we follow the CDC guidelines as?
Well, as you say, they change, so I think just to, to be, uh, consistent and informed, so everybody knows, now these are posted, so...
So by making the motion, if they change, are, we just change automatically, correct?
Yeah, because they're CDC guidelines, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So did you make that motion, Mike?
I can make the motion, I think Susan did. So your, your motion is to adopt the CDC guidelines, the current CDC guidelines, and adapt as they change, correct?
Okay.
I mean, I...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll second the motion.
Second by Tremblay, if there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Um, moving on to communications, does anybody have anything for communications? Only I have is a shred event, shred and, uh, e-cycle event at October eighth, we're gonna team up with the Village of Romeo, it'll be held at the Morton Street address from nine AM until twelve PM, so if you have any shred papers that you wanna have shredded, or any electronics you wanna recycle, bring them on October eighth from nine to twelve, so...
And the location again?
Uh, three sixty, I think, I think it's three sixty-one Morton Street, isn't that, uh, does anybody get the flyer?
It's on Morton Street, three sixty-one.
I don't know. That's what I was saying, but I...
Hold on, one, six, seven.
Three sixty-one, three...
Was it eight to twelve?
It's at Parks and Rec, right?
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, three six one Morton Street, Saturday, October eighth, nine to noon.
At the Parks and Rec building?
At the Park and Rec building, yep.
Yeah.
Limited to five banker-sized boxes per car.
Well, yeah, bring TVs, computers, electronics, whatever you need to do. Does anybody else have any communication?
Elections are August second, primary.
How many absentee ballots you guys got in so far?
Had a lot of activity.
Okay.
I just got some questions. Uh, any update on sewer capacity?
As of right now, the Village of Romeo had, uh, talked about, they, uh, approved the document, I think at their Monday meeting, and I have yet to receive the document yet.
You mean a contract document?
Uh, possible contract, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing else?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple others. The media services RFP, you said, was redone?
The what service?
Remember we said the media services RFP would be updated and then just have it ready? We made a motion probably two months ago, I just wanted to know, do we have a new RFP for media services, in case we need it?
Yeah, we're, not...
No.
Okay.
Is the motion read?
Yeah.
I gotta go down and look at that.
Yeah, that we were gonna prepare, update it, in case we needed it.
Oh, okay, no, that's...
I mean, I, I don't think it's urgent, because we did give ourselves another four months to reevaluate ourselves, but I don't think we should lose sight of that, in the event that this stuff...
Yeah.
Kinda doesn't, hopefully it doesn't end up in a disaster, but... And then, Mike, uh, just note to you, the water sewer committee needs to be established. You know, the one we approved at the last meeting that was supposed to be established.
And the price increase?
Yeah, I would suggest you probably get a couple residents on that. But you gotta establish it.
Yeah, we still haven't gotten, the, right now, the paperwork's on Bob Seifert's desk, to get the amended ordinance together, so, okay. Do we have nothing else, I mean, I make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Two minutes short of our guideline. I thought it was gonna be a lot shorter.